This program is brought to you by cable franchise fees and generous donations from viewers like you.
Good evening. It's October 4th, 2021. Pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted via remote means. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:32. I'll call upon each councillor by name. At that time, they should unmute their mic and say present. This will indicate that they can hear us and we can hear them. Please remember to mute your mic after you say present. Shalini Baumel.
Present.
Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Thank you. Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Darcy Dumont.
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Johanneke.
Present.
Dorothy Pam. I'm sorry, Dorothy made said she might be just a little bit late. We'll check in later. Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Present.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
And Sarah Schwartz is absent this evening. If there's, there is no chat for this meeting. If there are technical issues, please make sure Athena and I know. And we will decide at that time whether we need to stop the meeting until you are able to reconnect. Please use the raise hand function if you have questions. And other than that, I just want to make sure that Athena will be monitoring councillors' connections. Okay. We're going to go on to announcements. Do you want to put them on the screen? Okay, so we have a couple of meetings coming up. But I do want to point out that the Finance Committee will be meeting actually on October 19th at 2 o'clock by Zoom. We mentioned at our last meeting that we have a new town council feature, which allows people to submit public comment. And I want to mention that that public comment is now displayed on the page of the town's website for town councillors. And it will be there in chunks of times. The... So for example, the one that's displayed now is September 27th through October 4th. And it was uploaded immediately prior to tonight's meeting. The next posted period will be from October 4th for all items received during the meeting through October 18th, cutting off right before the meeting. Councillors will have access to all of these through SharePoint. But for proprietary reasons, we are unable to share that spread, that Excel spreadsheet on the website. It's because it's an Excel spreadsheet. I just want to mention a couple of other items while we're looking at our announcements. And that is, the redistricting maps are on the wall next to the town clerk's office. Also, that voting by mail requires that you go to the town website and download the application and make sure that it gets to the town clerk. And also that your ballot is returned before the end of election, before the polls close on Election Day. Early voting starts on October 25th and goes through the 29th. The hours are posted on the website. One item I'd like to mention, because it's become a bit of an issue this year, and that is, we really urge all to respect campaign signs that are posted on private lawns. It's been a kind of a town-wide issue and nobody's pointing any fingers, but frankly, like others, I've had some of mine stolen as well. The town manager's evaluation is beginning and we will be posting that on Engage Amherst, inviting the public to make comments. We're going to go on to the hearing. And this is the hearing of the tax classifications. And I'm first of all, going to call on Richard Morse, Chair of the Board of Assessors. Because all members of the Board of Assessors are present, this is actually a posted meeting of the board. So, Richard, would you please do that?
Thank you. I call the, this meeting of the Amherst Board of Assessors to order. And I guess for people who are watching at home, I should call the very short roll of the members. Lee Hines, could you answer? Present.
Present.
Ken Hargreaves.
Present.
And my name is Richard Morse, the Chair of the Board. Also present is interim assessor David Burgess and our future principal assessor, I think she's future, Kim Mu.
So I'd like to take this moment to welcome Kim Mu. She is our new principal assessor for the town of Amherst. I also want to recognize Stephen Casey from the Assessor's Office who has joined us this evening. The presentation will be made by David Burgess and as well with Finance Director Sean Mangano. So we're going to go ahead and put the presentation up. And when you want to advance it, David, just let us know.
Yep. Well, good evening. And this is the annual classification hearing that we are obliged to have every year. Athena. Next slide, please. Basically, we're going to decide on its four motions, whether we're going to split the tax rate, have an open space discount, small commercial exemption or residential exemption. This year, we want to give you a more in-depth presentation of the residential exemption, which we'll do at the end of this. Mr. Mangano and I have put together something and he will present it. Next slide, please. At this point, we have this, we have already set all the valuations. So we're coming to you tonight. We want to talk about what the tax rate is going to be and how we're going to portion it between the residential, commercial and industrial properties. Next slide, please. This is just the overview of the Mass Law that allows us to do it. And it's the same as last year, hasn't changed. So you've all seen it. Next slide, please. We have four classes of property and I'm going to explain just a little bit here about what they are. We have the residential, commercial, industrial and personal. Commercial, industrial and personal really speak for themselves. They're alone and they're But our problem comes along in the residential class where many people see the apartment complexes. These are not commercial. They are residential. So that is why they're not part of the class and why we have such a large value. Next problem. Next slide, please. As you can see, there's the definitions a little bit more enlarged. And as you can see, the commercial also includes our forest land, chapter land and recreational land. Those are all considered commercial. And the personal is in Amherst because of the way we have done our allowed an exemption for the first $10,000. It's really only the larger businesses and utilities are taxed. Next slide, please. This is what we have a breakdown by the valuation. As you can see, we have nearly 90% of our values residential. Very small personal, industrial and commercial. Next slide, please. What we're voting on tonight is one of the most important things is if you're going to split the tax rate or not. A split tax rate means that you're going to if you vote to raise the tax rate on commercial, industrial and personal, you would basically lower the value slightly on residential. And that's one of the things we have to decide tonight. If we select the value of one, we will end up with a single tax rate for all properties, all classes of property. Next tax rate. And then next slide, please. We are assuming at the moment, and this is still early because, sorry, excuse me. We are estimating the valuation is going to be 21, our tax rate is going to be $21.27 this year. That's down from last year of 21.82. I don't know if many of you have been watching the market, but the market is very active at the moment. And the last couple of years with residential. We hadn't wanted to raise the valuations, but we needed to to reach Department of Revenue standards, and that has caused the tax rate to drop. What we've done here is we've compared what would happen if you shift the full burden from residential to commercial. And the commercial tax rate would go to $31.90 and residential would be 1995. So you'd be saving about $1.32 as opposed to adding 50% of the commercial property. The little demonstration shows you what would happen to the average property this year. And the residential, single family will go up by $554 if we split the tax rate. And the average commercial will go up by 5,624 if we split the tax rate. Next slide, please. This gives you an idea of the number of communities that have a split rate. And it's basically the same form you saw last year. It gives you an overview of how many have done it. And we've got 110 communities. And they're all have a lot, much larger tax base from the commercial side than we do. And so we just want to make you aware of that. Also, I'd like to point to this, say at this time that if we did accept this and did a split tax rate, it's always difficult to go backwards. But that is only a comment. Next slide, please. This is a residential exemption. This is a council option. And this is, this is in here because it's usually part of the tax classification. However, as I said earlier, Mr. Mangano and I will go for this in depth after this presentation. So if you get the next slide, please. Small commercial exemption allows us to adopt an exemption for annual employment for a business that has 10 people or 10 or more people and assessed value of a million dollars. Nearly all of our properties are owned by one person and occupied by other businesses. So we have basically nothing that qualifies for this. Next slide, please. And these are just recommendations from myself and the Board of Assessors and the Town Managers that we would recommend the single tax rate. No residential, small, commercial or open space exemptions. These are, as I say, recommendations. This falls only to the council once a year. Next slide. And here we can see what the breakdown is for this year. As you can see, the residential is close to 89% and then the rest is another 11%. That makes it over the total valuations that we have at the moment. These are the valuations we will have and they shouldn't change between now and when the Department of Revenue looks at things. Next slide, please. And if you have any questions at this time, or if you wanted to hold questions until after the residential exemption, we can go straight to that.
Why don't you go right ahead?
Sean.
Thank you, David. So this, the information you're about to see is in response to when we met last year, we told you we would study the residential exemption a little bit more. And that's what we've done. So next slide, next slide. So the residential exemption is a tax policy that allows the town to exempt a percentage of owner-occupied residential property values. So the key here to remember is that when we're looking at this residential exemption, we're only talking about parcels in the residential class. And the distinction to be aware of is whether it's owner-occupied or not owner-occupied, that's going to make the difference. This is a decision the council must make annually. The maximum that could be exempted, if the council so chose, would be 35%. We'll show you an example in a second, but that 35% exemption is applied to the average residential property value. And then whatever that amount comes out to is applied to all property values as an exemption. And again, we'll show you what that looks like in a second. This policy shifts the tax burden away from lower-valued homes and onto other types of residential properties. And we will show you what the break-even value is for owner-occupied homes as to whether you will save money or would pay more if this exemption was adopted. And there are 15 other communities that have adopted this policy, which you'll, you'll see which those communities are in a second. And all are sort of larger commercial bases around Boston or are on the Cape or Islands. So the study process, we needed to update our records to show whether certain properties were owner-occupied or not. There were some that we did not know the status of. It's not something that we regularly collect. And so we sent a survey and this, I want to thank Stephen because Stephen helped tremendously with this. We sent a survey to 764 properties whose status was unknown and we got about a 50% response rate. So the numbers you'll see in a second are not 100% accurate, but they're as accurate as they can be based on the information we have right now. And we've been working with the Board of Assessors who have been great over the past several months. They've given us a lot of guidance and provided feedback and support. And we thank them for that help. Next slide, please. So these are those other communities. There's, I think, 15 of them. And again, you can kind of see they fall into two categories for the most part. None are particularly similar to Amherst. Not sure if that matters, but just so people have a sense of who else has adopted this. Next slide, please. So the breakdown of owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied within the residential class, 31% of parcels are non-owner-occupied and 69% are owner-occupied. Next one. So I think the examples are the best way to understand how this will work. This example assumes a 15% exemption. Again, you could opt as high as 35%. We did 15 because it's sort of in the middle. So I'm just going to quickly walk you through this. You get a sense of how it works. This top line where it says total residential property value, that's the total assessed value of all the residential parcels. About 2.4 billion. We have 6,259 parcels at the time we did this, which comes out to an average value of $376,000 per parcel. And if you apply that 15% exemption to that average amount, that would produce an exemption of about $56,000. So that $56,000 would be applied to all the owner-occupied parcels within the residential class, which there are, if you go to the next line where it says total exemption amount. There are 4,342 of those parcels. So you do the math and that would be an exemption of 244 million from our assessed, our total assessed values before the exemption was put into place. And that's important because you take that amount out of that total assessed values, that leaves us with roughly 2.1 billion of value in the residential class. And the reason that matters is because we still have to raise the same tax levy. The exemption does not increase the tax levy. It doesn't decrease the tax levy. It just shifts the tax levy within the parcels within the residential class. So with a lower total assessed value, we still have to generate that 50, roughly 50.5 million tax levy. The net result is that the tax rate in the residential class will increase. So if we did this 15% exemption, in this example, the tax rate would go up to $23.95 per thousand in order to produce the same tax levy that we currently had or that we had in FY21. And that's compared to the rate that we did have back then, which is 2146. So that's just one impact to be aware of. If this was adopted, it will increase the tax rate in order to produce the same tax levy. Next slide. So this chart breaks down sort of how the savings will be spread across the parcels within the residential class. On the left side are either reductions in a tax bill or increases to a tax bill. The next column where it says number of total parcels are just the number of parcels that will benefit in that from whatever that changes. And then the next two are breakdown of how many of those parcels are owner-occupied versus how many are non-owner-occupied. So just going through a couple of these, 58 parcels will see a reduction of $1,000 or more. If we did a 15% exemption amount, 3,843 would see a reduction in their tax bill of $1 to $999. And in those two examples, those are all owner-occupied parcels because only owner-occupied parcels get the exemption. So there are no non-owner-occupied parcels receiving any reduction in tax bill. Going down one more, we're looking at the number of parcels that would see an increase in the tax bill up to $1,000. There would be 1,990 of those. And in this particular category, there is a split of owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied. So the break-even value for a parcel is 540,000. If your parcel total value is less than that, then you'll realize some savings from this exemption. If your parcel is higher than that, then you'll actually pay more because you still will get the exemption. If you're owner-occupied, you still get the exemption. But that higher effective tax rate that I talked about on the prior slide will increase your tax bill by a greater amount. So, so you'll end up paying more in that case. So that's why you'll see a split of some owner-occupied parcels seeing an increase, even though there's an exemption. And then I'll just go down to the bottom for one second. You'll see there are a number, number of parcels that see a very large increase in their tax bill. 23 will see an increase of 10,000 or more. And many of these are the apartment complexes that are non-owner-occupied but are high-value. Next slide. So some key points to remember as you consider this. This policy shifts the tax burden based on the assessed value of the property and its ownership status. It does not shift the tax burden based on ability to pay or income status. Large apartment complexes are generally non-owner-occupied and we'll see a large increase in their tax liability. While owner-occupied parcels valued at less than 540,000 would see a decrease. There are a number of situations that we really weren't on our radar prior to doing the survey, but through talking with people, we became aware of them. There are situations where a parcel may be non-owner-occupied, but it's not because of a rental situation. It may be because a parent has assigned ownership of the house to a child or a child has or a parent owns a house, but lets their child live in it, but they don't live in it. In all those situations, they would still be considered non-owner-occupied and they would pay higher taxes, even though it's not really a rental situation. So that's just something to keep in mind. We don't know exactly how, how many of those situations are in town, but there are at least a couple. This policy will increase the residential tax rate in order to make up for the exemption amount. And again, can't emphasize enough that the exemption itself does not increase the tax levy or decrease the tax levy. It just shifts how the tax levy is distributed among the residential class. Next slide. If it was, if this was to be adopted, we think the Assessor's Office would likely need additional resources in time to implement because we would need to have a mechanism really on an annual basis to determine changes in ownership status, right? Again, we don't really collect that data on a regular basis. And if this was adopted, that would become a very important piece of data to have each year. And the council should include in its consideration what it hopes to achieve with tax policy and whether the residential exemption will help support that intent. Next slide. So Town Manager and staff do not recommend adoption of this exemption. One, because non-owner-occupied properties would pay increased taxes. Many of these would be the apartment complexes and that would potentially lead to higher rents in those complexes in a, in a town that already has relatively high rents. The benefit is not income-based. It shifts the burden to higher-priced homeowners who are already paying higher taxes. There would be additional work required by the Assessor's Office to determine this every year. And we anticipate there being an increase in the overlay reserve to allow for more people to appeal their status each year. Next slide. And I think sort of the last thing is if there is no interest in the residential exemption among the council, you can certainly go ahead and vote. If there is some interest in pursuing this, we feel strongly that there should be more public engagement to make people in town aware that this is being considered because of the dramatic impact that, that it will have just on how taxes are allocated among the residential class. And, and if it is tabled and not voted on tonight, we would prefer it be voted before November 1st because there's a lot of legwork once this is all voted to getting tax bills together and out the door. And I think that's it. Thank you. And David and I and the board and anybody in the Assessor's Office are happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for both the study and the very thorough presentation. I want to mention, we are not voting tonight. This vote will be in two weeks on the 18th, unless we delay that vote. The hearing is in advance of asking the council to adopt the tax classifications for fiscal year 2022. And as I mentioned, that will not be for two weeks. The format for the hearing is similar to any other hearing. When it is time for residents to speak in favor or in opposition to the recommendations, we'll ask you to limit your comments to three minutes and use the raised hand function or the star nine on your phone. Please note that comment during this period of the meeting is only in relationship to the recommended tax classifications. So I'm going to start by asking the council if they have questions. And I already see Dorothy Pam's hand up. Please unmute and make your comment or statement or question.
I had noticed Andy's hand up before mine. Andy, would you like to go first?
I had two questions. One is that I noticed, of course, that the if it was adopted, the residential exemption of the property tax goes up to over $23, which has been getting us closer to 25. Does that run into problems for communities that choose this option to getting to the tax cap? So that's the first of two questions.
Do you want to go on and ask a second one, Andy?
Lynn, do you want David to answer that or wait for the second question?
Why don't we go ahead, David?
No, the $23.95 will not bother the $25 tax rate ceiling. The tax rate ceiling is based on the, what the single rate would be. So we could raise that to $30 or $40. Obviously, that's an exaggeration. But it wouldn't have, because of an exemption, the $25 would not be impacted. We can really look at what would have been the 21.27 rate for that.
And Andy, I'd say I had that same question. Because when you look at the other communities that have adopted this, they all have much, much lower tax rates than we currently do. But David, David provided me the same answer that he just provided you.
Yeah, Dave, I, I had the same question. Andy, go ahead.
So the second question is, do you have, are you aware of any experience from other communities that have adopted this exemption that in fact, there was a pass-through of rent increases to tenants of apartment complexes?
So we don't have any specific experience. Again, none of the, unfortunately, all the communities have adopted this are all Eastern Mass around Boston. We can certainly look at that more. I just don't know how much we'll be able to pull out because they already have such high rents. But we can look at that and see if there's a before and after study if their rent levels went up.
Okay, thank you.
The one comment I'd have on that, a lot of it is demand and supply apartments. So while the taxes would go up for apartments, whether they could pass it on to the tenant, a lot depends on how, what's the demand-supply situation.
Okay. Ken, thank you. Are there any other comments? And please let me know if other members of the Board of Assessors would like to make comments or respond to questions. Dorothy.
I think this is an interesting area to look into. I have a different recommendation, but it's way too late to bring this up within this calendar. So I suggest, I'm going to suggest something else, but that it not be brought just before we're supposed to vote on it. For example, you mentioned that there is no income limit. Well, I believe New York City has one that is based on age and income, the senior citizen tax exemption. So that people have to be of a certain age and below a certain income. And that's fair and it works very well. And I think it is something that matters a lot. Also, in the example you gave, without, I mean, I just feel rushed without having a chance to see how it works. Somebody who is in the category who would get the 15% reduction would have their taxes reduced by a certain amount, but then they would have it increased by a percentage. I would have to see how that, you know, a problem done out like that to really understand that because it's, it's it's too much for us to try to deal with this complex thing. Obviously, we want to bring about some kind of differential tax rates in order to keep people in the town. And that has some relationship to income and I'm suggesting it should have some income, some relationship to age, the senior citizen tax exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa? Thank you, Alyssa.
I have multiple questions that might be hard to keep track of, so how would you like me to do this? Just ask a couple.
And and we'll go one by one and look for answers.
Okay, great. So when, and I'm sorry if I missed this when, when Sean was explaining it, but when the survey was sent to the seven hundred and sixty four properties and we only got like fifty percent return. Questions I have associated with that are. When we're talking about that information, is that information, once we have it then updated on the property cards that everyone can see in G I S? Or are they completely separate systems? Two is associated with that is what is the penalty for not responding? And three, does that mean we just go ahead and assume they belong in the rental registration system and we follow through on that? Or do we just do nothing? That's my first set of questions.
Do you want to start with that?
So David, we updated it in our system. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we updated in the system that would be available online. We can make that data available to people through the supplemental data, supplemental data that we have online. Would you believe I forgot what you said, Zach?
That, that's why I wondered, so. If I'm wondering is so like when I pull up my property card, it says owner occupied. I'm wondering if when I look up other property cards that you've now found this information out from, they will say non owner occupied. So that was one of the questions and I'm not clear, I understand the answer to the part about supplemental data. And then another question was if they don't respond. At all, which obviously a significant number of them didn't. Does that mean that we then try and put them in touch with the rental registration system and say, we assume you have an outstanding rental registration report? You must be non owner occupied, so get with the program.
We had, we had not. And made any decisions or even discussed if we would notify the. Resident rental registration people. As yet, because we simply didn't think about it, to be honest. And go back to your other question about the owner, it would show on the G I S so that people would see if it was owner occupied or not.
Thank you, that's very helpful, and I'm assuming that there's not really any way of penalty, other than that my idea of connecting those two things together, if people don't respond, they don't respond.
Well, the penalty is, is they don't respond, we've considered them a no, and they wouldn't get the exemption. But that's the only penalty. They would be allowed to appeal that decision.
Okay, so if we put this in place and we had those sort of. We made those assumptions, then that's, that's the kind of thing that people would appeal on that basis.
Yep.
Okay, great. And then I'm sorry, I don't want to take too much time, Lynn, so if you want to come back to me. But one of the things that has always been a concern and and David's used to me saying this from having seen me do this a million times with him. Is that? This in theory can push away even more non undergraduates. From renting, so like that means it could be even less accessible to families to rent in our town. Because thus far, we have seen a relatively unlimited supply. Of wealthier undergraduates that could eat any rent increase that was passed along to them. And as long as we have wealthy undergraduates who are happy to have their parents or whatever, pay for their rent, not saying all undergraduates are wealthy, far from it. But those that can, we have not yet seen a limit on that supply, and so that would make it even more likely. That a family would have trouble renting, which is more of a comment than a question, but the, which leads to the question, which is. Is this the only tool we can, we've thought of so far? For how we make apartment buildings and single family homes rented to undergraduates pay more? Is there any other system we're aware of that says? If you rent, because one of the things people keep bringing up, and I know you've heard this before, David, is. Isn't it like a business, right? Like, why isn't it taxed like a business? Why is it taxed like it's just homeownership? And then if we adopt the residential exemption, then there's a difference. But for right now, those folks are not considered by us versus the IRS. As running a business by renting out three single family homes from their LLC to undergraduate students. So I understand this tool and we can argue about if this tool will accomplish our goals or not. But is there no other tool for treating people who rent out houses as though they have a business? Because maybe that kind of tool would address this income inequality issue that we can't seem to address through the exemption problem.
Not that I know of under the state law, no.
Oh, that's, that's a simple answer. There's no, because everybody says, well, why don't you tax them as a business? And the answer is, you can't.
Well, have I got a minute that I could explain that?
Please.
We don't tax them like a business because we don't split the tax rate. But. They are valued as if they were a business, using the rental income. So they would pay, they're always going to be higher. On your two and three families, that's not the case, we're going to look at what the market does. Because we do have a market for those selling. And we, so we can use a market approach in that. But for large complexes, we do use the income and expenses that they give us. The same as we do for any commercial properties in town. So. If you will, they're taxed in the commercial way, but we don't have a commercial tax rate.
Okay. Alyssa, anything else at this time? Okay, I'm going to move to Darcy.
Thank you. I guess, again, stating this for the third year now. I think that adopting the residential exemption is a big issue for town residents. Especially the more than half of the residential taxpayers who would potentially save up to a thousand dollars a year. I do want to thank you very much for expanding on this possibility this year. In your presentation, I really appreciate it, I, I know I, I mentioned it for two years running. Adopting this would maintain the ability of lower income folks to afford to live in moderately priced housing. I was interested in what you said about the Cape and intrigued because I couldn't figure out why that was happening in the Cape, so I. Googled it today and did read a little bit about it. And I, if you read about the Cape towns. And their debates about it, they talk about the increasing wealth divide and how this. Is a means to balance that out. And obviously, we have that in Amherst. We also have absentee homeowners buying second or third homes here either. For their children who are students or for them to have a place to stay when they come and visit, but. Basic, you know, high wealth individuals from out of town. So I do have the same question Andy put forward, including. Whether other towns provide any type of incentives to landlords not to pass through the increase? And also a question regarding. Whether you've seen examples of. Like hardship exemptions for, you know, a person who had little income, but. You know, a huge house.
Okay. Sure, right, Sean?
Please.
As far as the hardship exemption goes. Massachusetts allows us people to apply for what they cause. Two exemptions, a clause eighteen exam. That's more than an exemption, that's a deferral and the four eighty one A deferral. The Board of Assessors have the authority to look at what people earn and compare it to their taxes. And the Board of Assessors can forgive the taxes or a portion of each year. And I want to tie this in with what Ms. Palmer answered earlier. As in regard to her New York's exemption, we also have the resident, an exemption. For low income persons in Massachusetts of a certain age. So those exemptions are in place and they're. On an individual basis, not a sweeping exemption like the residential exemption. And I just rest one more thing, sorry. The places in the Cape, the properties in the Cape. That is where the residential exemption started. And it was aimed at the people who were coming from out of town. The by large buildings, they were pushing up the prices. So it was seen as a way to give the year round residents a break. There was no thought given to apartment complexes. Because Tisbury and all around there, they don't have the same sort of apartment complexes. Or the. The low. Income persons that we have in this area. So it wasn't considered an impact on them. You have to consider the impact on what would happen to the apartment complexes, not the individual. Single family property owners, such as a third and fourth property owner, building owner.
Okay, thank you, David. Any further comments, Sean?
Rich has a hand up.
Or I'm sorry, Rich, please.
Yes, I just wanted to say. You know, I have some empathy for the council. Because this residential exemption is hard to understand. I mean, it's a redistribution of the, of the tax burden within the residential class. And I think it's difficult to understand. But I have to say in the, I think I'm in my fifth year now. And I do live in fear of our town. And I'm speaking for myself. I live in, I live in some fear with our, about our sort of toying with this idea. Because if you look at those communities on the Cape, and if you look at the communities in the eastern part of the state. They either have split rates. Or they have a fairly homogeneous rental class. So if you're out in Tisbury or you're out in Provincetown, you are essentially looking at vacation rentals. So what we have. Is a class of renters that really runs the gamut in terms of income, in terms of socioeconomic status. I think we, I think we know that at least. So I'm very, very concerned about the impact this would have on renters in our community, particularly. Working class and poor renters in our community, I think it would be very, very. I think, I suspect it would be very onerous. So. I'm speaking for myself here, I really worry about your wanting to, to toy with this too much. I think it's, speaking for myself, I think it's basically a bad idea. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. Kathy, you need unmute.
I lowered hand but didn't unmute, so that didn't work. I, I want to build on what Rich Morse said and some of the other questions and Sean's last slide. He said, I don't, number one, I don't think we should be even doing this now. But I think there is a benefit to doing a broader public discussion, which was one of those slides said, because it's complicated. And what David Burgess pointed out is this is one kind of exemption, we have other kinds of exemptions. And this is related to a complex mix of what's rental housing, so. You know, I'm, I'm assuming we can't say, oh, affordable housing, rental housing is exempt. If, if it's rental housing and non owner, you know, it's, you, we, we don't, we don't have a lot of degrees of freedom on this. So I think the example you gave, but a few more examples would. In a public dialogue discussion where we're not talking about next year. So I understand time is of the essence now, but just do it. So that the rest residents can really be doing what we're doing now, saying what ifs, how would this work? Because I think property tax is a miserable thing to try to make equitable. You know, we, we have the full range of, I live in a house. That someone lives in a house that for a variety of reasons has high value and they have very low income. That doesn't get addressed in this residential tax thing, they would pay more if we, if we split the rate. And I think making that clear and Sean, you just did fifteen percent, trying ten percent, you know, just to show. That no matter what you do, you run into this. So that was my suggestion of, of do, do the broader discussion, because we do kept keep. Getting asked this, people would like to have something more scaled to income. And having a better understanding of what we can and can't do would be great. Secondly, on the very first one, on we don't have a split rate by commercial and residential. At the extremely low rate of commercial that we have, so this enormous impact if we tried to tax commercial. I think it would be helpful to have a table of what the surrounding areas around Amherst, what Hadley's commercial rate is, what Northampton's, which Belcher Towns. So it's not just how much ours jump up, but the real risk that we drive commercial out of town. We've got such a small slice, so I don't know how easy or hard, but with this document, if we could get that table. It's been very helpful to show the giant increase for a small increase in residential on commercial, but just to say, and let's look. You know, a half a mile in any direction or a mile in any direction. We're not, we're not in a closed market here. You don't have to locate in Amherst, you can move, move it a little bit. So I think the recommendation to leave it uniform makes sense, but documenting that a bit more would be helpful. Thank you. That's a comment rather than a question. Thank you.
And you have your hand up, please unmute. Ken Hart, great.
Okay, I can't emphasize enough that how complex this issue is. I mean, just a simple fact that, you know, we have. Six hundred parcels. And sixty percent of those are owner occupied. But if you look at the number of housing units in Amherst, it's the reverse, sixty. Of the housing units in Amherst are rental. And so it's a huge market and you push one place and it comes back another place. And personally, I think the assessors office and the town staff, we've done as much as we can. Without getting more input from the community. Which needs to be done over a long period of time, you know, over a year. Where you, you have homeowners. Talking, you have investors and properties talking, you have apartment owners talking. Everybody's sharing what they're thinking about. That's the next step if we want to do something, I think.
Okay, are there any other questions at this time from the council before I go to public comment? Shalini?
Yeah, I. I wasn't clear about the response given to Alyssa's question about why we cannot treat. The rental apartments as a business. What I understood is that we don't have a split rate, so we can't really benefit from it, but. But the question is really, why can't the. Apartments that are being rented out to students be treated as a business?
Massachusetts law says that apartment complexes have to be considered residential. So we have no option on what we do with it. However, as I explained to Mr. Brewer. We do value them at the same method that we use for commercials, so we get the higher value on them. So we would basically not been short, we just aren't allowed to do it.
Okay, so we're not allowed, but what you said was we're assessing them like commercials, so a higher rate, but okay. Okay, and then the part, just one other question was the parcels, does it just? So like a. Downtown building that has, let's say fifty apartments, that's considered one parcel or is that fifty?
That's one parcel.
Yeah, it's complicated. Okay, thank you.
Steve Schreiber.
Yeah, so actually I had a similar question, so like a condo complex. Is that one parcel or is each unit a parcel? And if we were to do the split rate. How would we? How do we handle condo complexes? Because my understanding is that the parcel is owned by the condominium association, but the, each unit is owned by an individual that may or may not be owner occupied.
Properties, condominiums are treated differently, again, they are individual parcels. There's only one parcel of land. You may want, might nobody be too involved in assessment law, but we don't assess the land, it's called common area. We assess the properties, the each individual condo based on what they sell for. As same as we do for residential property, single families. So those are individuals and they would be fall under whether it's owner occupied or not.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go to the audience and ask people who would like to speak. In favor of this, to raise your hands. Seeing, yes. Catherine Walton. Virchio, please enter the room. Please repronounce your name, thank you. And tell us where you live.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, this is Catherine and Andrew Walton Beckey over on Justice Drive in Amherst. We are owner occupied in our residence. And basically, we're just looking for some, for some relief on the tax rates, current and pending. You know, we're, we work, we have two kids in school, one in college. Basic middle class family and we're really looking for some relief and hope this move forward, hope this moves forward. Basic middle-class family, and we're really looking for some relief and hope this moves forward, hope this moves forward.
Thank you very much for your comment. Are there any other comments in favor of the proposals we're hearing? Are there comments in opposition? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to go back to final comments from the council and before we close the hearing. Are there any final comments? Kathy?
Lynn, I just have one on with the public that is participating. We didn't ask them if they either had a comment or a question. You know, I, we may, we may or may not have asked everything they could have thought of. So I don't know whether you want to ask that, or whether we can just ask that they send those into us. That, that's my only comment. I'm not always sure that we run the full gamut of questions that can be asked on issues like this. Thank you.
Okay. Alyssa?
So I understand that, as always, we do this at separate meetings, we are not voting tonight. But at what point in this process, obviously not during this hearing, which is when I'm talking right now, but is it appropriate at the next, at the, at the time that we're actually planning to vote on this, how is it that we make clear to the town manager that we want to undertake that public dialogue over the next year? Because we've talked about doing that every year, and we have never done it. And so what is it that we need to instruct to make sure that it's not, like everyone says, it's not coming at crunch time? We're not going to do it now. I hope nobody votes to do it now. But to, you know, start laying out, given our budget cycle and all the other responsibilities all these bodies and individuals have, to actually start that public dialogue so that by the time we get around to next fall, we can say, okay, we went through this series of conversations. But we literally repeat this conversation every year, and we never have that public engagement. So what does that look like? And how do we, how do we ensure that that happens?
Thank you, Alyssa. I think that's a very appropriate question. And I will look into whether we feel we need to do it with a motion, or it's just part of the record, and then set out as the expectations for the town manager to make sure that that happens. Dorothy?
I second what Alyssa said, wholeheartedly.
Okay. Shalini?
Yeah, and I think it would be really helpful for us to see what, what is the impact that this has on the rentals? Because one of our goals is to make our renting properties affordable to families, as I think Mr. Morse pointed out. And so this is going to increase that, so on the one hand, it does relieve the burden for properties less than $500,000, which is good. It, on the other hand, increases, potentially increases the rent of a large population of families, and brings, brings in more students and drives away families. So we have that. And then, of course, there will be, yeah, so if you can get more research on the impact that this had on renters and homeowners. And as Alyssa pointed out, if there are other tools that we can use that will give relief to people with lower income, and, and what I heard is we already have something in place for lower income and seniors. So maybe part of this is also about communicating more clearly. Maybe people don't even know that they have that, those options. So to ask for relief. So that would be another aspect of discussion or dialogue that we can communicate with people. Let them know they have these options.
So what I'm hearing from the combination of comments is that as we look at this again in two weeks, you would like to hear some thoughts about how we might approach a public dialogue in a manner that the public is, has enough information that it can be a thoughtful and complete dialogue. At the same time, I want to be very, I want to recognize the cautions that we have heard from the Board of Assessors. And at this point, I'm not hearing that we're going to vote to adopt any of these methods this year, that our votes in two weeks will be very similar to votes in the past, but that, or at least the motions will be very similar to those in the past. But that if we are going to open this up for public dialogue, it has to be done in a thoughtful way that provides a variety of models. George?
Just quickly, district meetings might be a very effective way of, of getting this dialogue started. Eventually, perhaps a larger public forum would be appropriate. But as I think about our own District Three meetings, obviously not in the next one coming up, but over the next few months and further, this would be a possible topic, and we could invite someone to come and, and present it to our residents. So people might think of, colleagues might think of using district meetings.
Good idea, George. Are there any final comments?
Rich, can you hand it? Morse said, yeah.
I'm sorry. Rich? You have to unmute.
The three of us spent more time this year talking about this than we had in any of the prior years. And our meetings got longer as a result. And I think one of the things that the three of us realized is how little we have in terms of resources out of the assessor's office to collect data. And so, and there are some fairly intrusive questions that, that need, that need to be asked of both renters and homeowners about their personal, about their household situations that maybe we can't get at in order to truly sort of understand what the sort of socioeconomic profile of both our, our owner occupied owners is, as well as our renters. So this is, it's an extremely difficult situation. You also have a board of assessors that literally cannot have a conversation between, between members without violating the open meeting law. So the three of us are, are sort of, sort of set in cement between the meetings because we can't talk to each other off the record. So I'm just saying that the assessors, I think, this year have done what we can, working with Sean and working with David. And I, we just, there is no real wiggle room to create more data. The other thing I want to say is, and this is in response to Ms. Pam's remarks, so much of this is governed by state law. And I think it's fairly hard to figure out what the local options would be to respond to poorer residents. So, so, so the state laws is really what governs here. So for example, residential housing is the, includes apartment, apartments. That's a matter of state law. So if we split the rate, the residential, the apartment buildings still stay in the residential class. That's a matter of state law. That's not something we can do about here in Amherst. So we're, we're sort of, we're sort of stuck here. We would have to have considerable resources to, to investigate more about who the renters are, what their circumstances are, who the, who the owners across the spectrum are in terms of owner occupied homes. And there's really nothing that compels residents to, to respond to our inquiries. So that's where we are right now. Thank you.
We appreciate that. I, I also really, we totally appreciate the work that has been done and the many hours that you have already spent on coming to us with more information than we've had in the past. Mr. Hines?
Yeah, just to sort of second what Rich has already brought up around the resources that would, that, that would be required to pull together, especially when you're talking about sensitive information like income status. That's important in order to understand impact, but it's also very difficult to pull together. And again, the resources required to do that would be certainly more, more than, than are on board right now. And again, recognizing the situation with our primary assessor, who is in the process of change. So there's that, and, and, and the current exemption process, which I might agree, does probably require more publicity. So that folks, there is, it is an application process. It has to go through an approval by the board so that folks know that they can have access to that. But, but again, publicity is required.
Thank you, Lee. It's nice to see you. Are there any other comments? Darcy?
Quick question. Is, is not the, I mean, we have the information about people's assessed value. Is not census data adequately helpful in figuring out all of this?
Darcy, the problem with census data is whether or not you can correlate it in the way that you need to in order to draw the conclusions you're looking for. I think that we may, over time, look for some models that do that, but it's not as simple as just pulling out the census data. It's, people who do this kind of research are the people I worked with for years. And they, it's, it's very complicated, extremely complicated. Kathy, final comments, please?
Just a quick response on that, you know, except for the Dec, Dicentio, the one we just went through, and even that, it's a sample, and Amherst is a sample, so you don't get anywhere close to this match of homeownership value. It's just not there. And it's the closest we can get to income, and the income data is what it is, but it's on a sample. So it's, it's much better to, to, well, we're limited by just knowing property values, but at least we do know them. So that's just my comment on that. I agree with Lynn.
Yeah. Are there any other comments at this time? Before I ask Mr. Morse to adjourn the meeting, I, again, I want to thank David Burgess, first of all, for stepping up and stepping back in and helping Amherst out. For Sean, for all of the stuff that you have done in relationship to this research. And also Stephen, thank you very much also. We want to thank our Board of Assessors. Again, like so many other people, these are not particularly, they're mostly thankless jobs. And we want to thank you for taking them on and for being volunteers in our community on such an important issue as this. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Morse to adjourn the meeting.
All right, gentlemen, if you have no objection, I, I hereby adjourn the, this meeting of the Amherst Board of Assessors.
Thank you. That does not adjourn anybody else, just so we know. We are going to move on with our agenda. Actually, I'm going to officially close the hearing. And that will be part of our record as we go forward. We are now going to move on to general public comment. And this is comment about anything that you would like. It would, if you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. On Zoom, you use the raised hand function, and if you're calling, you press star nine. Would those people who would like to make public comment, please raise their hand? Okay. Residents are welcome. I'm sorry?
I'm so sorry, Lynn. Point of order, is this the only public comment period we have tonight? We don't have one associated with any individual items, right?
Thank you, Alyssa. That is correct.
I just want to make sure if anybody was waiting for something.
And good to clarify. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes. And the council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during public comment. With that, I'm going to call on Janet Keller. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Sure. Janet Keller. 120 Pulpit Hill Road in North Amherst. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I would like to comment along the lines of the communication I sent to you today. I'm sorry, it was later in the afternoon. I was up until 1:00 working on it and back at it at 8:00, but I was working slowly. Sorry for that. I do want to ask again, as I did in the comments I sent to you, quite urgently, to have a coordinated process here. And ask you, please, not to split the apartment zoning off with the SPR and SP designations. That it's really important that the whole thing be considered as a whole. And I was thinking, as I was unloading the groceries tonight, that of the process that we went through just for the bridge over the waterfalls over the Mill River here on, on Mill Street. And it was an integrated and coordinated process just for that, building that one thing. What we're talking about here is building a place where people will live and shop and go to church and go to the library. And we need to keep that all together and that picture together. And I would like to ask again that you, when you do put it all together, or whenever you make this decision, that you make it a special permit for all cases. You do that, we do that for lots of other categories. Like, like, so for townhouses, for example, why not for apartments which have so much bigger an impact, both in the size of the buildings and the size of the complexes? Thanks for considering my comments and for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you for joining us, Janet. Is there any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. And it's actually quite short, pretty straightforward. And I want to mention that although we will probably not exercise anything related to the districting advisory board, I'm going to leave that item on the consent agenda in case there is a discussion. Pat, do you have a comment?
I want to remove that from the consent agenda so that we have the discussion.
Oh, okay. It, all it did was allow us to act tonight. It doesn't mean we can't have a discussion. Okay? All right. So I'm going to make the motion, having already been asked to remove one item, to move the following items in the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. Suspension, suspension of Town Council Rules of Procedure Rule 8.4 for the following items. 8D, long-term public way requests back in parking spaces at 11 to 19 and 23 to 25 North Pleasant Street. 9A, approval of the following town manager appointments. Board of Health, Community Preservation Act Committee, Cultural Council Design Review Board, Energy and Climate Action Committee. Is there a second?
Oh, I had a request.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the long-term public way request is you are attempting to just have one discussion?
That is the intention. We can always have a second discussion, but We can always have a second discussion, but the by having 8.4 on this, it does mean we could do it in one discussion.
Okay, I'm I'm not objecting to that.
Okay, George Ryan, you have your hand up?
I second.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to move to a vote. Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Greasmer's an aye. Mandy Jo Hanke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Kevin Ross.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz's absent, Shalini Baumel.
Yes.
Passes unanimously for those of us here, 12 to zero to zero and one absent. We are now going to move on to, excuse me. We have noticed we have no proclamations, resolutions, we have no presentations or discussions. And so I would like to make sure that the following people have joined us, Alicia Walker, Brianna Owen, and Pat Onabaku. And would you please show us your face if you can? We'd like to see you and welcome. Hi.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Brianna. Alicia, do you have a camera with you tonight?
Hi, everybody. So I am here, but I actually really hurt my back this weekend. And so I'm laying down and hoping that I can just participate without my camera.
Okay, we can hear your voice, and that's good. Mandy Jo, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just noticed that our public commenter, Ms. Keller, is still unmuted if we could maybe.
Sorry about that.
Thanks.
Thank you, and we will put her into the audience. Thank you so much, Mandy Jo. So first of all, welcome, and thank you for all the hard work you've continued to do as part of the public as part of the Community Safety Working Group. The town manager and I had an opportunity to meet with co-chairs of the Community Safety Working Group, Brianna Owens and Alicia Walker this past Thursday. Both Brianna and Alicia are part of our meeting tonight, as you know, along with Pat Onabaku, who is also a member of Community Safety Working Group. Based upon that discussion, we are going to divide this our discussion as a council into four parts. But I also want to make sure that before we start that we give Brianna and Alicia and Pat any opportunity. They would like to comment. But let me just mention the four parts. The first one is really, is there a counselor who questions the creation of a successor committee for Community Safety Working Group? The second is, is there any counselor who objects to this being a town committee, not town council committee, with the town manager making the appointments upon recommendation of TSO and approval of the town council? Are there comments to the charge about the charge? And are there comments regarding the stipends? So Brianna, Alicia, and Pat are would any of you like to make comments at this time?
I would like to defer to the co-chairs to make opening comments.
Thank you, Pat. Brianna?
I'm not sure I have much to say. I just want to thank you all for taking the time to read over this charge that our group put together. Ms. Pat and Alicia really worked hard on this charge. This is something that we all believe will bring our town forward. So thank you again for taking the time to read it, and we're happy to be here to answer questions as you all have the discussion on it.
Okay, Alicia, is there anything you would like to add?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to echo what Brianna said. So we didn't prepare a presentation or anything tonight. I think we worked really hard on this job description. We edited it multiple times and brought it back to the group to make sure that everyone was in agreement. And so we are really here today in hopes of moving this forward. And so that we can answer any questions you all have so that we can really start to move this along. So I am happy to be here with you all and to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, both of you and Pat for joining us. I want to start with the first question, and it is really, is there anybody who feels that they would like to speak to the issue of whether there should be a successor group to the Community Safety Working Group? Dorothy?
I have a question about town committee.
Okay.
Does that mean that the meetings would not be recorded?
That is really up to the individual committee. But Paul, do you want to speak to that?
So it it would be a public body, just like any other public body. And if it's on Zoom, then it's easy to record. If it's not in Zoom, if it's we go back to in person meetings, those tend not to be recorded. But in the Zoom world where we are now, they would all be recorded.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for that, asking that and clarifying clarifying. Kathy, we're staying on the question of, is there anybody who wants to voice an opinion regarding there being a successor committee to the Community Safety Working Group?
Yes, I would like to voice an opinion, and it is I think this is a terrific idea, so it's an endorsement of it. I I think it has a unique charge and can play a both constructive and probably creative role in our community. So I'm just speaking strongly in favor of it.
Thank you.
I'm sure many others would say that. So I'm going to ask, is there anybody that objects? Okay, in the interest of time, is there any counselor who objects to it being a town committee? Meaning the town manager will appoint the committee with approval of TSO and the council? Let me just say, we went back and forth. We talked about both options. Paul, you might want to add to this. The real decision is what can make us allow us to move faster. Paul?
Yeah. So I think the the key here is not that the town manager appoints it no matter what, which which form it takes. So the question is whether you want the town council to create the committee or if you want the town manager to create the committee. So that's why I differentiate there. But it's not who appoints it. The appointment process is the same either way, however you create it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Darcy?
Yeah, I'm a little confused about that. And would be interested to hear from Brianna and Alicia and Pat about what your thoughts are and what the council's thoughts are about like if it seems like a committee that is created by the council. And again, you know, Paul will be appointing regardless. Seems like that gives it a little more stature and it gives the council a little a little more buy in and reason for including it in our town manager goals, et cetera, although it seems like we'll put it in the goals one way or the other. So I guess I'm interested in hearing from you you about what your thinking is of whether you want us to be creating the charge.
Sure, if I if I may.
Yes.
But when we met, we went back and forth whether it's going to be done by the town manager or the town council. So we were thinking more of having the town manager appoint the standing committee because we we feel that it will be much faster to create. We're hoping that we will have the standing committee before CSWG is done by November 2. So we're looking at a faster path. And from our understanding, it looks like, you know, having the town manager pass will be much faster.
Okay.
That's the only reason.
Thank you, Pat. Brianna or Alicia?
Ms. Pat said it very well. Thank you, Ms. Pat. I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Alicia, you're okay, too?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. I think Ms. Pat touched on everything nicely. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Yeah, I mean, we had this conversation last week, which was, as Darcy just indicated, and Ms. Pat and Brianna and Alicia just elaborated on. It's nearly a nuance without a difference in that the town manager appoints it no matter what. There was never any question that the town council was going to appoint it. The question is just if the town council wants to muck around with the charge that the Community Safety Working Group worked so hard to develop. And so obviously, I have a bias in that sentence, which is that the Community Safety Working Group worked hard to develop this charge because they thought it was the right charge for their successor committee. So I see there's the only purpose in having it be a town council committee, since, as we've now said several times, it's appointed by the town manager either way, is if someone feels like it somehow gives it more stature or more cachet like Darcy referred to. Either way, the timing would be the same, except if the town council thought they had to belabor the charge, which, again, the language I'm using makes it clear that I think it's ready for us to move. It's ready for the town manager to move on. We've had the opportunity to see it. We already could have told him if we had any questions about it so that he could have taken them to Community Safety Working Group. So I agree that there's no apparent reason to call it a town council committee, given the practical nature of it being a town manager committee.
I'm going to go to Kathy Shane, and then I'll come back to Darcy.
Yeah, I just have I I agree with what Alyssa just said. I just have a quick comment. You know, if there is a way of doing a footnote of a legislative history that this came before the council and the council was strongly in favor of it, we accomplish the stature of it. That, you know, that's that I think that's so. So two years from now, if we're not all here remembering this, it is it's noted. And I just have no idea, Paul, whether we've ever done that with committees. You know, we've got committees all over the place, and some of them are created by law and others we've created. But it's I I think footnotes or something just would help. But I'm totally fine with this and would not want to slow it down.
Okay. Darcy?
So I guess I'm just interested in knowing what if if we aren't creating the 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 charge and we don't have something in it like the ECAC charge, which which asks for an annual report to the town council, et cetera, et cetera. And I guess this question is for Paul, to some extent. Do you see our attachment just being that we have, you know, one of our our priority goals is racial equity, and this will be involved in the town manager goals? Is there any? Is there another way that we're attached to this? That you can see?
Mr. Bachman?
Yeah, I I think the the council will have as incorporate these the missions into goal. This is a tool to achieve those goals. And however it gets created, whether it's a town council committee or a town manager committee, it's it's almost irrelevant. But it again, I think it's just if the council really felt I want to have ownership of or or take, you know, have this be part of our cachet used as like as a council created committee, I would defer to that. But I don't think I think the purpose of the committee and the mission of the committee is the same regardless.
Thank you. Dorothy?
I'm I'm still learning a lot of things. And my question is, what is the difference between the committee and a commission? And why is this a committee and not a commission?
I can try that one, but Paul may you may also want to take a stab at. Alyssa, you want to take a stab at it?
Well, having been associated with appointing committees for over a decade, there's no difference. It's what somebody calls it at the beginning. There are a couple of things that in state law, it's a conservation commission. So you wouldn't want to start up like an informal conservation committee and pretend it's a legally binding commission. But other than that, it's a distinction without a difference. That's why we always say boards, committees, commissions, or whatever we call them. And so committee is the more standard term unless state law compels us to use a different term.
I certainly accept that. Paul, any comments? Great. Okay. I think, yes, Shalini?
Yeah, again, just like everyone completely support this work and wanted to move forward fast. And my question, I don't know if now is the right time to ask, was around the purpose. And I totally support the purpose. Can I ask a question about that? Yeah.
Yes, I mean, this is as good as any. We're going to move on to any comments about the charge.
Okay, so, you know, given our lack of diversity, which hopefully we will have more diversity in the next council. But even so, we don't have the diversity. And so I really appreciate the charge that, you know, of providing advice and support to town government and including the town council. So some of the issues that we discuss in policies we make, like, let's say, we're doing the comprehensive housing policy. And now we want to get get feedback on what will be the impact of that to different community members, right, through the racial equity lens? So is that so I wanted to ask the Community Safety Working Group, what did you envision in your charge? Like, what is your input going to look like and what might that look like? And if you don't have that, if that hasn't been worked out, that's fine. But I would generally just encourage, I would love to see us get more perspective feedback on some of these issues that we are discussing in council.
I I can take a stab on that. Actually, when we're developing the this committee, Alicia and I, we discussed extensively that basically we would like the new committee to be able to collaborate with different committees and and town institutions on issues around racial equity and social justice. So we're hoping, you know, that will be the case so that if people have if you're if they're dealing with issues of social equity or racial, whatever, they can come to this committee to get some advice. We're hoping, yes, to to get some input, basically.
Thank you, Pat. Brianna?
I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
I don't have anything to add. I think you said it perfect. Thank you, Ms. Pat.
Alicia?
Um, yes, I also just want to amplify what Ms. Pat said.
Okay, great. Andy?
Yes, I asked this question with great hesitation because I need to preface by saying that I am delighted that we're at the point of creating this committee. And I also think that the point in the charge of designating positions for BIPOC representation and the ratio that suggested are reasonable and explained very well by additional document that I assume was provided by the group that put this together. So I really thank you for it. My question is for our town manager, however. Has there been any legal opinion coming from the town attorney as to whether there are any cautions that the town should be aware of in making such a designation? I have not posed that question to the town attorney. I would note that the Community Safety Working Group does have a quantum, a similar quantum in its charge, and there hasn't been an issue with it. So I've not posed that question to the town attorney. Good, thank you.
Mandy Jo?
Yes, I also have to preface mine comments and concerns about the charge itself with the fact that I do absolutely support the creation of this committee. But I am concerned about a five seventh requirement for BIPOC representation. That's not just a majority. That's a super majority in a town that while I know we are working on increasing our BIPOC residents is 70% white, non Hispanic white. That's not to say that we need I I support a majority BIPOC on this committee. But I would go with four of seven, not five. And I am concerned about the inclusion of a selection committee when the charter itself already envisions selection committees. And so the duplication of something that is already in formation concerns me. And that asks for extra time from extra people. Um, that asks for extra time from extra people when the manager already has a residence advisory committee to help selecting. Um, members of committees. The purpose goes back to something Shalini was saying, um, while. Some of the sentences say that the purpose of this is to support all members of the Amherst community to understand and enjoy the benefits of a community. That is truly diverse. The sentence in the middle. States specifically that it's to provide advice and support to fully realize a resolution. That the town council adopted that relates only to black residents. Um, and so I sometimes in reading this get concerned that. The committee is, this, this committee would be focused on community safety for black residents only, not for all BIPOC residents. Or frankly, all residents in town, um, simply because it's referring to a resolution that. Relates only to black residents and community safety and social justice is a. Need for all residents, not just black residents. Um, I don't know how to fix that part, but I think. I would like to be much more clear that it is a community. Safety and social justice committee that is intended for all residents and I get concerned with that sentence that that. And confuses the issue. And lastly, on the charge. I, in my three years on the council, I have learned that. Funding priorities can sneak into measures the council adopts, even though this one may not be a council adopted thing. Um, in non-funding measures. And the part of the charge that says. Assist the town in exploring resources such as buildings for the youth empowerment center and BIPOC multicultural center. Um. And some of the other charges, um. Might assume spending priorities that the town has not adopted yet. That's not to say, again, I, I, again. Preface mine with, I believe we need better youth programming in town. Um, but I get concerned when we are referencing spending. Potential spending priorities in documents that aren't meant to be spending priorities. That then can in the future be used to say we adopted spending priorities that we never actually discussed as spending priorities. I hope that's clear as to my concern about that one, because if we're going to adopt spending priorities and become and say that. A youth empowerment center and a BIPOC multicultural center are going to be spending priorities for this council, then I think we need to have that discussion. As a specific discussion on spending priorities, not do it. Through a charge that talks about it, but is not discussed specifically on spending priorities.
Ms. Pat or Brianna or Alicia, is there any response to any of those comments?
I don't even know where to begin. So. The name of the committee says it all. For the BIPOC and black. Folks in this town. We have not benefited much from the resources in this town. We have not been at the table. With the dominant white folks. And so this is one way, if we're talking about racial equity, social justice, this is an example. Of how the town. Should show its commitment. We presented the youth center and the multicultural center. For funding and you guys denied, denied it, you didn't approve it. It has to be somewhere so that it will not be forgotten. In terms of, um. The super majority, that's like non-starter for us. It has to be super majority. We, it has to be. Five BIPOC folks and two white. This is a committee that we envisioned that will make real changes that we want in this town. If we make it four to three, it would dilute the whole point. BIPOC folks has to be the majority in order to accomplish change. Because it's been a long time that we have started school in this town. We are tired of waiting. We can't wait no more. So we want the voices of BIPOC folks. We live in this town, we pay taxes, and we're not benefiting from most of the resources. That is generated in this town. So this is the chance. If the town council is really for social justice commitment, show it to us tonight. Thank you.
Brianna or Alicia?
Um, yeah. Oh, sorry. You can go ahead. Okay, um, yeah, so I just wanted to say that, uh, when Ms. Pat and I created this document. Uh, we were under the impression that the intention is to eventually address all of the recommendations. Of the CSWG, because we have not heard that that would be the case otherwise. Um, and so we put together a successor group, which would be the group to follow our group and these are our recommendations for them to ensure. That they're implemented and that they don't necessarily. If they cannot be funded out of the town budget, that they are still, that they still follow through. And so that, whether that be looking for grants or funding otherwise, or continuing to fight for, for the opportunity for this to be town funded. That they have all of those options available to them. In trying to find creative solutions to what we have already indicated backed by research and lived experience. Would help create a more equitable anti-racist town here in Amherst and these are needs that were expressed. By many community members and we did outreach and research um, to come up with these recommendations. Um, and so this is the follow-through. Um, and this committee specifically though will have other things too. That was just one part of the charge. Um, so there will be other things that they're going to be looking at and providing for the town. That relates to the affirmation by the town council to work on dismantling white supremacy, which benefits every single community member. That does not just benefit black residents. When we uplift our community by the most, the most marginalized community members who can be seen as quote unquote, at the bottom. We uplift our entire community. And so racial justice initiatives, however. Need to be rooted in the experience and needs of black people. Otherwise, it is not racial and social justice. And so those voices need to be amplified at the table, not that there cannot be any other input. And so when we made the super majority BIPOC, we want there to be other identities also at the table. Not just black people, but, but they need to be there too. Um, and so we want this to be a really collaborative space and that white people also benefit from this. Everyone benefits from this. The entire society benefits from this. Our entire success. That our possibilities for success as an entire town benefit from this. And so that is why it is extremely important that this happen and that it happened quickly, because we don't want gaps in. The momentum and in the progress that we are making. So when this group ends and we've done a lot of engaging with the community. And, and gaining trust in our community, we don't want that to die. We want that to continue. We want the community to continue to build trust in our town government and for things to truly be inclusive. And this is just one little step to get us there.
Brianna?
I think Alicia and Ms. Pat said everything that I was going to say. Thank you both.
Pat, DeAngelus?
Yeah, I have a, um, I had a s- uh, reaction when Mandy Jo was talking about super majority, um. And the charge says seven voting members representing black indigenous people of color or other historically. Marginalized communities, which means somebody like me could be on this committee because I'm queer. Um, and I'm often underrepresented. So there is, there, yet I'm a white person, so blah, blah, you know. So I think that, um. It's important that that piece is remembered, uh, when we're thinking about who makes up the membership of this committee. Uh, and I think, uh, you know, Ms. Pat and Alicia spoke eloquently and I don't need to say more. But I guess I felt included in that first sentence in a way that you, you weren't able to see yet, Mandy.
Dorothy?
Well, I, I, this is kind of in response to Mandy Jo. Um, we have operated under the principle of, of the rising tides lift all boats. But we know that that hasn't really been true. And so this is an operation to do with redress and. I mean, having been through the women's movement, I mean, obviously, we had committees that were majority women or often all women. So I don't find any problem with the majority uh, strictures here. Um, I look forward to this committee working. Uh, I know how difficult it's going to be. I mean, if you think of the, the women's rights movement. You know, the work is still not done, but um, I think this is a very good start. So, thank you.
George?
I have to preface this by, um. Just reminding everyone that I'm Chair of QOL, so we spend a lot of time looking at charges and documents like this. So I look very closely at the language. And so, um, there's a lot in here I really like. Actually, a lot. Um, but I do have some questions about the language and maybe the, uh. Uh, people can speak to this. Um, when you say incorporate, I have no problem. When you say support, when you say assist, when you say recommend. But I do have a problem when you say ensure. Um, and so I guess I would like you to, or some of the members maybe speak to what you think you mean by that. Um. And finally, the last one, provide input to the town manager during the budget process. I would like the town manager or. Members of the group to explain what that means. So I, I like this a lot, um. But I do have a problem with the idea that somehow you're going to ensure the implementation of something. Uh, you're going to ensure that the town implements something. Um, and I don't quite know what it means to provide input to the town manager during the budget process, because we have a fairly well-defined and comprehensive budget process. And so I'd like to understand how this committee sees itself, um, fitting into that and how the town manager sees them fitting into that.
Let me start with the first.
I, I can comment if that's okay.
Yes.
Actually, the, um, what we put together is what we saw on the town website. We looked at some of the committees, some of the language that's being used, so it's no different. In terms of, um, the stand, uh, the new group being involved with budget process. That's the whole point. We want to be involved. BIPOC, uh, uh, folks, marginalized folks. We want to be involved in the budget process. To make sure that the resources in this town is benefiting everybody. I hope that answers your question. We have to be involved in the project process to give input as what are the priorities for BIPOC community. We do not want majority white telling us what we need or what we want or what should be given to us. We want to be at the table. So also express what we want. That's, that's what social justice looks like. Not white people telling us what to do. I hope I answered your question. I want to go back to, um. Councilor Mandy Jo, question about. Um. Super majority. So my question to you is, have you ever asked? Other town, uh, other town committees, why we have? All white committee members. Plan, planning board, for example, do we have any person of color in that committee? Of course not. You tell me any other committee in this town that is majority BIPOC. Have you ever questioned majority white committees in this town? Answer me.
Mandy Jo, would you like to respond?
Yes, I have. I hesitated to even bring up this issue because it's such a charged issue. But what I took away from our racial equity training that the entire council took. Is that we need to respect our places and ask questions. Because if we can't have a respectful conversation and we can't ask the questions, we can't move forward and we can't go over. Our boundaries and our stuff. And so I decided to bring this up. And yes, I have. We have had a school committee that has been majority BIPOC, because it has had. One age, two Asians and a Hispanic on at one time. It is not his majority BIPOC right now, but it has been in the past. Um, that is one that comes to mind right now. I know as a council, we have. Worked to try and get people to apply to boards and committees that are from. Non-white communities. We have not been successful doing that. Um. I don't know what the solution is. At the same time, I'm concerned if the solution is that we have to specifically state that only. Two of the members can be white. That, that's to me not necessarily the right solution either. I'm not saying it's a. Bad solution. I'm just saying I don't know what the right solution is, which is why I asked that question and I appreciated Pat. With the marginalized communities, because one of the things I didn't bring up is, in looking at this charge, I got really concerned that it was. Concentrated on black residents, not Asian residents, not other marginalized communities, um. Because, you know. Our Asian members of this community is also have lived experiences. Our LGBTQ members of this community also have lived experiences where they need to be able to come and explain their own. Um, community safety needs too, and they need to be respected too. And so I don't know what the solution is, but I didn't feel I should say nothing, because I think. We need to have conversations about this. That's not to say I'm against five or four or. Anything, I'm, have concerns and I think we need to have a conversation that is respectful about those concerns. So yes, I am deeply concerned that in this town, we don't have enough. Non-white representation on our boards and committees, um, but I don't know what the solution to that is, um. And I'm hopeful we can better find a solution that doesn't necessarily require us. To. Put racial quotas into our charges, because that's what this is, a racial quota.
If I may, can I? Okay, so a couple of things. We do respect Mandy. You did not answer my question. My question to you is. Can you tell me any committee that has super majority BIPOC folks? Your, your answer was. Majority school committee. So you did not answer my question. We talked about BIPOC and marginalized group. You weren't even involved in creation of this committee. You want to create, your comment is quite divisive. If an Asian resident is listening to this group, you are being divisive. No wonder white people, you know, this is your space, this is white space. When we speak up. You try to silence us. Who told you that what we created is only for black people? You're making that up. Please stop dividing this community. It is not helpful. And when we speak up. It should be welcomed. Stop silencing us, please. I have a lot to say there. I'm trying to. Save time, that's all. Maybe I have another opportunity, but please. When you say Asian and, you know, Asian, what does that mean? They're part of us. They're BIPOC folks too. Stop dividing us, please. Stop it.
I'm going to move on to Shalini.
Um, sorry, Lynn, I don't mean to interrupt, but I didn't, I couldn't figure out how to raise my hand.
I, I'm sorry, Alicia. Sure, go ahead, please.
Also wanted to provide a quick response to, to George and Mandy. Um, and so if we just go back to the language here in the charge in regards to George's question. Ensure the implementation of all CSWG recommendations adopted by the town council. At this point, you all have only adopted the CRESTS recommendation. And so if at any point you all were to adopt any of the other ones, that we would want them to ensure its implementation as well. But in the meantime, they will be tracking its progress. So I think that's what we mean by that here. Um, and then at the bottom, ensure that the town implement a robust translation service. This is actually, um, a necessity, because we have a lot of community members that don't speak English, right? And so how are they going to know anything about what's happening in our town if we don't have a robust translation service? And so how are we even going to engage all possible BIPOC? Members to any committee if they can't even understand what's going on? So this is something that we. This needs to happen, whether it be right now or. When this committee is created, they need to figure out how to make this happen. I, I think. We feel pretty strongly about that. And then provide input to the town manager during the budget process. I think that's. A typical thing that committees do if any of their recommendations or anything they're working on does have budget implications. And so if at any time. The council were going to adopt another one of the recommendations that this committee would probably want to do what we did and have. A presentation for the finance committee or to write up a budget proposal or something like that. And they can deal with the town manager in regards to that, similar to what we did as a CSWG. And then I also. Wanted to just say in regards to Mandy Jo's response that this is also. A great reason to have a multicultural center. Because it is a space where all community members can come together of all races. And learn about each other and each other's culture and each other's ethnicity. And if we can make this, if we can normalize. The differences that we have in the space that's comfortable for all people. Like just imagine the possibilities we can, we can create as a community. And so I think that just emphasizes the need for a multicultural center.
Brianna, did you have any other comments on this at this time before I go on?
Um, I did have just one comment in regards to something that George said earlier. And it's similar to what Ms. Pat said, but I just wanted to emphasize that programs, funding and departments developed for the BIPOC community should be proposed, developed and implemented. By the folks that it's aimed to serve. And that's really why it is included in the charge of this successor group.
Okay, Shalene.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the discussion we're having and. Because it's allowing me to understand the nuances that were intended and to understand. Why the Community Safety Working Group, you know, the thinking that you had behind it. So I do hope that. The questions that are being raised are not seen as. As an attempt to silence everyone because we do want to. Make sure that, you know, we all want, we want, we really, really, really want to hear the diverse perspectives. And I don't think anyone in council here is intention is to silence. And along those lines, I. Completely support the majority and supermajority, whatever that's called of BIPOC and. Because of the reasons that have been shared, my question was going to be that. That since it's a community safety group that it, you know, it is. The safety of different stakeholders in our town. Different stakeholders have different lived experiences and have different needs. And coming back to then Mandy Jo's question that. Yet, and I'm an Asian and my need for safety is completely different and my experience of safety has been completely different from what I heard from. People, you know, from black youth, for example, walking downtown. I don't face the same. Concerns that they face, right? And then I, at the same time, a homeless person may have a completely different need. So I think what I, the question I had was not so much in terms of. Requiring that. I'm okay with the BIPOC being the supermajority. But my question was more to ensure that we do have a representation of different stakeholders that might include seniors. Because seniors have their own safety needs or homeless people and. Or Asians for that matter. And it's not that. You know, I, again, we're not bidding each other, bidding ourselves against each other, but I just want. Having seen the video of the. Asian students that they created or their experience of racism in school. And it was like really heartbreaking to see what they are going through and it's very different and unique to them. So I'm really hoping that they will be in a time to. Include different stakeholders so that we are able to truly take care of. You know, the safety needs and social justice needs of everyone in our town.
Okay. I'm going to go on with to Alyssa.
Thank you. And I really appreciate especially three members, the Community Safety Working Group, being able to take the time to talk with us tonight. This is a highly unusual thing for us to do. We don't usually create new committees in the first place. And we don't usually have this kind of chance for dialogue with you having presented us so much information ahead of time that we could digest between last time and this time. And have this conversation tonight. So thank you very much for being present and willing to engage in that. And hopefully it's a sign of, you know, the way we can discuss things more effectively in the future. I have two. Comments I want to make, one that are different than what other people have brought up. One is, I actually really like the bullet point that says provide input to the town manager during the budget process. I think that's a really important point of clarification. I think there are a lot of committees. That don't even realize, and not talking about Community Safety Working Group, I'm saying the other longstanding committees. Who don't necessarily understand there is a budget cycle. And if you come up with an amazing idea in April, that might not be the right time. And so making it clear that we're expecting that this committee would totally be in the position to provide input to the town manager. During the budget process so that everything is fully considered all the way through. I think is a really good point of clarification and maybe needs to be done to some of the other charges. And then the, my question in terms of in addition, even though I indicated earlier, we could have sent feedback to the town manager. This is such a minor thing that I hope you would find useful. Which someone mentioned earlier, the idea of an annual report to the town council. I'd be really eager to ask you to add that here. That doesn't mean you have to come and do a presentation if you don't want to. It's just an annual written report of. This is what we, we're going to try and do. This is what we ended up doing. This is what's coming next. I think those kinds of reports are incredibly valuable to the town council. And to the community. So they have a sense of, wow, look at all this they're working on. How can we support different ways? What might be on the horizon? And also by saying it's a report to the town council, again, it's not in some weird like authoritative, the town council will decide if it's a good report. It's just like amazing information that we would have. And if you send it to us. And consider whether or not you want to actually come and talk about it. But if you send us the report. Or the future group sends us the report, then it's not filtered by anything the appointed town manager says. So the. Elected officials should be hearing from you what you were able to, what you felt like you were able to accomplish, any sticking points you've had. Like we should be hearing that at least on an annual basis. And so I hope you might consider just working with Paul to just add that sentence to the charge to make it clear that. The town council would be eager to hear from you at least once a year and probably more likely, depending on what you're working on.
Okay, Kathy?
Okay, so Alyssa just took one of the comments I was going to make on the annual report. I think that would be a great add if. The committee was willing to take that on. The other suggestion, I'm, I'm. I'm not going to try to echo others. I like the way this charge was written and I read the ensure. Sentence the way Alicia. Explained it that if we've endorsed something, ensure that it happens. I, I think that's good wording. My other suggestion, and I was just looking up. Exactly what it does in its charge is the Human Rights Commission. You might, whether you want to write it into your charge or not, you might think of. Which other committees are natural affinity groups that you might want to coordinate with? That they're dealing with the equal rights and enforcement of rights, including racial equity and social justice. So it's. To me, it's a natural, natural affinity group. So to the, the extent that. You're both looking at similar issues that you. Occasionally have a joint meeting. And I don't know where that goes in the charge because I don't want to tell you what to do, but it's a thought of who else is. In other committees and sometimes at least. One of the things we're thinking about with the elementary school building committee is holding a joint committee meeting, one. With the school committee because we're dealing with similar issues. So there might be room for that. So whether you want to write that in, it was a suggestion along with the annual report. Thank you.
If I may respond?
Please.
Thank you so much, Kathy. I think it's an excellent suggestion. So our thinking is that hopefully when. The town manager hires the DEI director. He or she will be the liaison to this new committee and will facilitate, you know, collaboration like that. I think. It's a natural affinity, definitely. The work that Human Rights Commission do, yeah. Thank you for commenting on that.
Thanks, Pat. George?
Yeah, maybe for some it's just a quibble of language, but I don't see it that way. First of all, I agree with Alicia very much that. I would very much like to see us institute a robust translation service. I think her point. Is very, very well taken and I would certainly work very hard to try and see that happen, but I can't ensure that. And so my thought simply is that there are things here that you, and this charge that make great sense to me, as I've said. You certainly can support and you can assist and you can recommend and you can work very hard or advocate for. But you can't ensure. So that's simply that point, though I actually agree that at least with that item, I would certainly work very hard to ensure that that takes place. Secondly, I want to go back to something that's, I've heard a number of times now from different quarters. I admire very much Mandy's courage in actually asking questions. And I think, I hope some people begin to think about the fact that when questions are asked. They shouldn't be answered with claims that, oh, that's divisive or you're trying to silence us. We have a very difficult job. That some of you may sometime soon get to learn more about. And we have to look at a picture that is much larger and far more complex. And there are a lot of questions that we need to ask that sometimes we're afraid to ask or we don't ask. Because when we do ask them, sometimes we're told certain things that are basically equivalent to, don't ask those questions. So I just want to support what Mandy did. Just simply asking questions does not mean that you don't support something. It means that this is really complicated. And there are all kinds of implications, budget implications. Implications on a whole number of levels. And we need to really think hard. And part of that is asking questions and sometimes difficult and hard questions. I hope people respond to them with respect. And with the understanding that we are also struggling with these things. And we can't really think them through if we can't have the freedom to ask questions and get responses that don't simply amount to, oh, you're being divisive.
Brianna?
Hi, George. I just wanted to emphasize that there's really no one size fits all when it comes to race. I feel like us using the word BIPOC was, could represent a range of different people in this town. And while I understand asking questions is really important, it does take a lot of courage for people like myself, Alicia and Ms. Pat. To come in front of you all and talk about this charge when we are a minority of what I'm seeing on the screen of people who are to represent us. I understand asking questions, but with that, I want you to realize that I don't have representation at this table. There is nobody on the town council right now that identifies as Latinx. So it is equally hard for myself. Ms. Pat and Alicia to come and to talk about, to talk about stuff like this.
Thank you, Brianna.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions on this? Then I would like to move on to the issue of the stipend. Brianna, did you, did you want to say something to start?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I did. I forgot to lower my hand.
I can go.
Pat, please.
So basically, Amess Town, Amess is a resource town. I do not understand why. Residents are expected to serve, to volunteer without any compensation, given that. We have diversity. Of people in this town from different socioeconomic background. We're saying that we're not diverse in so, so many committees. We feel that having stipend. Might incentivize some folks to. Join some committee. Perhaps they could use that money to pay for childcare. It could be a night that they go order food out so that they can attend to meetings. The whole idea of just having for free, I think it should be across the board. That, you know, any committee in this town should, should get stipend, just like you all, the town council. Get stipend. And I appreciate the work you guys do. I don't think I will ever run for that. It's a lot of work. I give you guys credit. It's, it's a lot of sacrifice. School committee also gets stipend. I was surprised that Human Rights Commission don't get nothing. You're not going to get diverse people if you don't get some sort of stipend. So it's no brainer. We shouldn't even be arguing about this. We didn't come up with a specific amount, but I would tell you. That the a thousand a year that was given to CSWG is woefully insufficient. So whatever you guys want to recommend, it should be more than that. And I tell people, I say businesswoman, people should not be shy about, about talking about money. You know, it's still a volunteer work. I get that. You all, you know, spend so much time, whatever you guys, town councillors are getting is nothing. It's because you like public service. It's not, you know, it's not always about the money. And so I think, I'm repeating myself, all committees in this town. Should get some sort of stipend to be decided by the town council or town manager. Thank you.
Brianna, did you want to comment before I go on to other people?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment and say. We, basically what Ms. Pat said, we believe in a stipend for our successor committee and we hope that other committees in the future will get stipends. But I just want to remind you all in regards to other committees as a group, we had to come up with what we thought was best for our successor group. So that's why we put forward those stipends. And I know that right now other committees are not getting stipends.
Thank you. Alyssa?
So we've had only been in a very general sense, had this conversation about stipends in the past. And so I'm really glad. That you brought this forward as part of the charge, as part of this discussion, rather than just saying, well, we'll deal with that later. So thank you for bringing that up. But I do have two points. The second one is that I need the town manager to talk to us about what he perceives will happen at the end of this meeting. In terms of what he will budget for stipends. So that I need to understand if that's something we need to put in our budget policy guidelines, if that's just something he's going to automatically do. Like he literally automatically did it for Community Safety Working Group of a thousand dollars each, which I totally understand is not adequate. In that, as Ms. Pat indicated, we don't have stipends. We had. As select board members, we got $300 a year until the last couple of years of the select board when we were up to 1,500. The school committee got nothing. When we changed to the charter, we each got five, I'm not including the chair differential for simplicity sake. When we got the charter. We got 5,000 each and we actually suggested strongly to the school committee that they take stipends for exactly the kinds of reasons that you're talking about. Are those the right numbers? I have no idea, given that we were a town with a history of $300 or zero. And that was only for a handful of elected officials. I don't in any way have any reason to believe that 5,000 or 3,000 school committee is the right number. In terms of what is the right number is clearly a conversation that needs to be had. And I think it's entirely appropriate to look at a higher. Form of compensation when we're trying to encourage a different kind of participation. You know, you do the same thing over and over again. You get the same result. At the same time, just in terms of practically speaking, I want to know what's going to happen at the end of this meeting in terms of that stipend. Because I don't want that to just be kind of like a forgotten about issue. I want to know what the path forward is. On how the town manager is going to manage that. And that's not really something unless they've already had the conversation at Community Safety Working Group that. Community Safety Working Group members can answer, but that's something the town manager at the end of all our other comments can address as to how that would work. So I am in every way supportive of a stipend. What I don't want to do is say. Whatever the town manager figures out and then just hope it magically happens or it doesn't happen.
I'm going to just go through the rest of the questions and then at the end, the town manager. May have some comments. Pat?
My cat's going to be winding, whining. I'm sorry, I can't control it. I'm. I'm wrestling with the idea of a stipend. I have to be honest about that. I don't know if I can say I'm ready to wait until the end of the meeting to find out what the town manager wants to provide. I do feel like the wrestle. I do feel like, uh, the wrestle for me is I do feel like people need money for family care and for, and often for meals and things like that. Th- those are real needs. Uh, and but I'm, I, I see a, a budget ripple effect that I'm, I'm not comfortable with right now, so I'm not ready to say yeah, uh, yes to this. I need more information from uh, the three of you. I need more information from the town manager, so I'm not ready to include stipend in the charge or, or as. And I, I wish I were, but I, you know, it's um, I really, I fought to increase the number of community responders and that was the right thing to do. It increased the budget for that. Uh, and, and it also had a ripple effect in other departments, um, let alone committees. And so I'm honestly wrestling with what, what is overall the impact of this? And it doesn't, it just doesn't feel simple to me and I, and I wish it did, but I, I need to be as honest about it as I can.
Evan?
Uh, yeah, so um, I understand the, the need for stipends. I, when, when um, Pat um, was speaking about uh, takeout, I started remembering when we were in in-person meetings. I was probably spending my entire five thousand dollar stipend on takeout between class and our town council meetings that normally I would have cooked, um, but couldn't. My concern has always been um, that once we provide stipends for one committee, uh, will that make other committees wonder why they are not getting stipends? Um, and, and that remains my main concern, um, especially for those committees. Um, yeah, I always look to the Affordable Housing Trust. We have an Affordable Housing Trust that I think at this time doesn't have a single renter on it. Nor does it have uh, anyone who actually lives in affordable housing on it. Um, and so if we're trying to increase socioeconomic diversity of our committees and a stipend is a way to do that, it seems like there are other committees that should also have stipends, uh, the Human Rights Commission and the Affordable Housing Trust being on the forefront of my mind. And I, and I completely respect, um, I'm sorry, I don't remember if it was Pat or Brianna who said, you know, we understand that as well. We're, we're here to advocate for our successor committee and that's why we're proposing it. So, so I get that. Uh, so where I'm at is, to me, this seems like perhaps a good um, committee to uh, do a test run of, of how stipends would work. Um, but I, I would want to do it with the acknowledgement that if we feel like they, the stipends for this committee are successful, then we will expand that to other committees where we see a need to increase the, the socioeconomic diversity um, and not limit stipends to just one committee in town. So I, I understand starting with this committee. I think this is a perfect place to start. I, I'm in full support of doing that. Um, but only with the recognition that it would be a starting point, um, a trial run, if you will. And then that will lead to conversations about what are the needs, what's the process and what are the budgetary implications of opening up stipends um, to other committees. The second part of this, which is a question, um, is uh, if we, if we are going to have stipends for this committee, uh, where, where do we write that down? Um, is that part, we didn't put it in the charge? Are we going to incorporate that into a charge? Um, I don't, I don't necessarily feel comfortable just saying, yeah, well, the town manager will always put a budget request in because if Paul quits tomorrow and the new town manager comes in and says, no, um, then, then that's not resilient, right? So I'd want it to be in, you know, the, the council and the school committee is in the charter. That's, that's mandated. I, I'd want it to be in the charge, but I don't think we could put it in the charge till we have a number. And it doesn't seem like anyone uh, has an idea of what the appropriate number is. Um, and so I guess my, my, my question is, how do we en- ensure, if we do go forward with this, how do we ensure this happens and that it's resilient across potential changes in the council and the town manager?
Um, again, I'm going to try to collect all and then move on. Uh, George?
Uh, this is something that, that I like in principle. I believe that if it is implemented, it should be applied across the board. It shouldn't be for one specific uh, body. Um, I would be in favor of creating a fund that um, could be drawn upon by anyone who serves any town committee um, for very specific purposes. The devil, the devil would be in the details, but it could be for transportation, childcare, elder care, it could even be for food. But it would have to be spelled out. There'd have to be a limit and it would have to be available to everyone. I, I don't agree with Evan in the sense that we should use this as a sort of starter case. Um, I think if we're going to do it, we should do it across the board. Um, I think in many cases, there'll be members even of this body that we're imagining and of many other bodies that would not avail themselves of it and shouldn't avail, avail, avail themselves of it. So a flat stipend, I would never support. Um, I would support a fund that would be, anyone could draw on from any committee, um, and uh, for specific purposes. That I think is an excellent idea and hopefully would, would make it easier for some to become involved who otherwise couldn't. Um, but I could not support uh, doing this for a specific committee, um, no matter how well intentioned.
Dorothy?
Well, I have a number of comments. Um, I understand the feeling of uncomfortableness of giving a stipend to this committee, but we've just discussed in detail the lack of diversity on our committees in town. So, you know, I think sometimes we have to stop worrying so much about process and say, well, let's see what we can do to change that. So I agree that this committee should have a stipend. And I think we have to do it now. I remember when Darcy suggested that we look at the stipend for the town councillors, which is totally woefully inadequate. We were told, oops, you just missed the deadline, can't do it. So you do it now when you're thinking about it, not later when it's too late. So, um, I also kind of can agree with um, Evan, that this uh, the Affordable Housing Committee would be good. Um, I do see this as something that should be thought about in more detail. There are, we don't want to have, this is like, oh, that's the black committee. All problems relating to minority or BIPOC people are dealt with by that committee. I don't think that's really what we have in mind. This committee has a certain charge. It has an awful lot of work to do. It can't carry the whole problem for the whole town. We need to have more diversity in more committees. So I do think we do need to have stipends for them. Um, I don't see any problem in having um, a stipend created for this committee. And I think we should ask Paul what it should be. And I'm just going to take a number out of the hat and say, two thousand. Thank you.
Shalani?
Well, I think we're all agreeing that this is a huge systemic barrier that prevents uh, large population, large groups of pop people in our community from participating. And perhaps it was put in place long ago to make sure that this happens and this is where we are now. And so to change it is, um, I think that should be a very serious goal. How do we change that? And I was curious if there are other models in other countries where they do it and how do they do it? And, but meanwhile, because there are going to be BIPOC people and other, um, you know, we, so we do understand there are those inequities that exist. And so we're not trying to equate all members and get it, everyone should get it or anything. But, but there might be other BIPOC members, right, in Human Rights Commission or in Affordable Housing and other, other uh, groups as well who deserve to be paid. So, and I don't know, I can't remember where we had this discussion. I think it was in the last round of Safety Working Group where, where there was a discussion, do you have a pool of money that, you know, once we can understand what are the um, barriers to participating, whether it's, you know, with childcare, transportation? And so I'm just putting that out there. Is that something that could be created and would that be acceptable or? Um, but just so that whatever we do, we can at least make it available to other BIPOC members and other groups as well. BIPOC and, and uh, people of lower income or who need that resource to be able to participate. So anyone who is not able to participate in local government because of financial resources should be able to avail of this resource and I would support that.
Um, Steve?
Uh, I, really interesting discussion and I am completely sympathetic, sympathetic to the notion that a stipend could be that which jars loose these barriers, so that diminishes some of these barriers to diversifying. On my hand, but um, as someone has mentioned, the, if you look at who's running for town council, it's, it actually in a really diverse group of people that are running. And so there's been no change in stipend to encourage people to run for town council. But for whatever reason, the group that is running this time is much more diverse than the group that is running last time. So money was not the, is, is not, the change in the stipend is not the reason that that happened. There's some other kind of a change that happened. So I think that this idea that the stipend will make, give us more diverse committees may or may not be true. Um, I like the idea that a number of councillors have put forth that there be stip, there'd be some sort of reimbursement available. But there's none across the board stipend. And quite frankly, I would, I mean, I know it's in the charter. I would extend that to the town council and the school committee also, you know, in other words, some people. Yeah, I, I can't, we can't change it because it's in the charter, so I, I'm just uh, bobbing away here. But I do like that idea that there be a pool, but it not be across the board. So just, I guess one other comment is, you know, I was on the planning board for many years. A lot of you had volunteered at other committees for many years, totally uncompensated. That's completely fine. But we didn't even get a parking pass. And so there's other little barriers like that, like a parking pass or a, you know, a valley bike share pass or something like that, which diminishes some of these barriers to, you know, to participating. But if I, if we were to do a stipend, I think I would write it in maybe as a per diem or something like that. Like every time the committee meets, there's a per diem available rather than a yearly stipend, but, but um, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Andy?
Lynn, I just want to say that Alicia and Brianna have their hands up.
I, I will be moving to them and then to the town.
I was going to recognize that too, but I also want to uh, see if we can get to a conclusion. I think that there are a lot of issues that I've thought about in this process, in this discussion, in whatever, um, we do have one experience in town additional, which was town meeting actually did set up a fund to provide childcare reimbursement for town meeting members where they um, just nearly said it was a barrier to their participating as the town, elected town meeting members without some sort of uh, reimbursement. And uh, um, I don't know the success of that or how many people followed through. But it did, I did think about that question because it, it um, also recognized that on this council, we're not all equal uh, financially. On the um, no committee, will members all be equal financially in what their means are and what their needs are? And as a consequence, um, it is a um, choice that has to be made between doing it as an even amount for all, um, so that you don't have to delve into those questions. Or if you delve into those questions, then figuring out how you do that with any sensitivity. Um, and I think that the other uh, question that then comes up also is cost reimbursement. All of these things in addition to what I've just said, um, have um, administrative costs that are required. So what I was hoping is, is that we could include this uh, by not tying it back into the um, charge itself because I think that the details are what's really hanging this up. But make sure that we either ask the town manager to come back with a proposal or we leave with a proposal. And I think we need to do that soon so we can get on to the rest of our agenda. With all due respect to everybody who's involved here, I look forward to hearing comments from the two co-chairs of the working group.
Okay, Brianna?
I really appreciate this conversation to really talk about barriers to people who may have socioeconomic and different barriers to participate in town government. What I want to say is that by creating a fund, we, as like the town of Amherst, are acknowledging that barriers exist such as childcare, food and transportation. But what we are not acknowledging is the diversity that people bring to these boards and committees and to the town government. Stip, providing a stipend for our successor group would compensate folks for their time, skills and lived experience. And it will send a greater message to the community that diversity matters, their lived experience matter and all of that matters to the town government. Um, I share this just because childcare, food, transportation come up a lot when we're talking about barriers to doing this work. And I will say, I don't have a family. I'm mid-entry in my career. And there have been days where I've had to take an entire Thursday off to be the co-chair of the CSWG and to lead a meeting well and to participate in the implementation meetings and to be a leader on this group. And I think that other people in the community probably don't have a job as flexible as mine, but their voices deserve to be heard the same way that mine is. And I believe a stipend would make that more accessible to other community members.
Thank you, Brianna. Alicia?
Um, thank you, Brianna. So I was going to echo some of what Brianna said. Um, and just acknowledging that this is, not having a stipend is a huge barrier to participation to local government in general. So like across the board, that that would change the available pool of people to be able to participate. Because being able to have the time and the availability to be here um, consistently is a privilege and not everyone has the privilege to be able to do that. And that will change that for some people. Um, I do like the idea of having a fund available, but that cannot be the only source. That has to be in addition to a stipend because that is what equity looks like. And some people face a lot more barriers than others. And I have to say that even for myself, it takes a lot for me to be able to get here. And the reason why I can make it to these, these meetings is because I have substantial friend and family support who help me with my children. And that is also a privilege that not everybody has. And I wouldn't be able to make it here otherwise. And I have the desire and the, the resources to be able to participate. But it, it really makes a huge difference because this is a time commitment. And besides just being on these meetings, you have materials to look over and things to look up and studying to do in between. And all of that time needs to be compensated. And so what creating a pool does is it sort of polices the way in which people use their money. And I'm not okay with that for low income people. I think that's stigmatizing. And also some people don't have the ability to be reimbursed. Some people don't have the money to put up front. And so that is still a barrier. And so I think that a wiser solution would be to present stipends across the board and allow people who don't need it to opt out.
Okay, Pat? Thanks, Alicia.
So actually, this discussion is the um, the best part of the, of this meeting so far. I thank everybody who have weighed in on this. Alicia just said what I, I was going to say. And that is not everybody will have the ability to uh, put up money and their request for uh, reimbursement. So the whole idea of poor money, I think, uh, most of us on this uh, Zoom, myself included, we're talking from middle of upper middle class uh, lens. So not everybody will be able to do that. And so it will create barrier. If people know that they have to pay for childcare and then reimburse, some people that can, wouldn't have it to do it. So we have not solved any problem. So I'm glad we're hushing these issues out. Another thing is, um, pardon, like, I don't know what that means, hourly? I mean, how do you quantify um, the work of a committee? It, sometimes as you guys know, it goes beyond the regular meeting. You guys, you know, everybody put in more, more time beyond the meeting. So the pardon, you know, wouldn't be applicable. I think I will favor across the board, flat. Somebody suggested two K. I think that's reasonable. And I can't speak for CSWG. We didn't come up with any money. I can't speak for the town manager, but um, uh, you know, that's not, you know, you know, it's, it's a good starting point, I would say. Um, so but yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Dorothy?
I think that we need to have a combination of two things. We need to have a fund available to all people and all committees if they want to ask. But I don't want this committee to have only a fund. I think it needs a stipend. Uh, there are some people who will never ask uh, if it's a fund. Uh, when I think of the, the school, the school trip thing, when the, some parents say, you're having Uh, when I think of the the school the school trip thing, when the some parents say, you're having all these expensive school trips. And there's always all these these fees that children have to bring in, bring in. And they say, oh, we have a fund. All you have to do, if you need it, if you're if you're needy, you can ask and yet get an exception. And I know a lot of people who would never ask, would die before they ask. The kid just doesn't go on the trip. So um we need the combination, different people do different ways. They should have a stipend. And there should be a fund as they had, Andy says, in town meeting that someone could apply to if they needed. And people, um, this committee could apply if they have. I mean, childcare is such a big expense to people who don't have a family support system. And if you want to participate, you've got to have it. So I I think we really have to think about that. We need to diversify our committees, not just by race and ethnicity, but by age. You know, and that means childcare.
So I'm gonna move on to Paul in just a moment um and then come back and just summarize where I think we are. Uh, on the issue of stipends, I'm actually very much where Dorothy is. Um, and if you don't need the stipend, boy, donate it back to something else. Just refuse to take it, whatever it is. My experience over the years uh with places like the Survival Center is it's hard to ask. It's very hard to ask. And people feel shame just walking in. And so what we need to do is I don't want to just see us have more integration on certain committees. I want to see it on all of our committees. And I want to see it from the BIPOC community, from the low income community and other people who experience barriers. So for me, this is an issue that's been out there for a while for me. Whether it's a stipend plus a pool plus a way to figure out how you can do that without exposing yourself. I think this is an unresolved issue, and I hope this is not our last discussion about it. Uh, because I do see it as huge barriers for many people to be able to get in the car, drive to downtown, arrange for family care, make sure there was a meal on the table. And in addition to that, pay for the technology and pay for the connectivity that we've all needed, particularly over this last two year, year plus, year and a half plus. Paul, would you like to speak to any of the particular issues at this point?
Sure. So just to, are you gonna summarize where we are in terms of the charge? Okay, yes. Uh, so uh in terms of the stipend, I think it's a it is a complex issue. Um, you know, when we met with the co-chairs, uh uh Ms. Ms. Walker, Ms. Owen, um, we raised the issue of like, well, what about all the other committees? And their response was we are concerned about the committees that we're recommending. That's that's within our realm. And I thought that was really, it was really good that they brought that up and it had generated really interesting conversation tonight. It's a bigger issue. It it's a conversation that's happening in a lot of other communities in my professional group. There's a lot of other cities and towns who are saying, how are you doing stipends? No one has figured it out. We have about 200 people who serve on committees and boards. Um, would we pick and choose? Would we choose? Um, would we do stipends? You know, there's an administrative um procedure here. It would add 200 people to our payroll, which is almost doubles the number of people that we would process on a payroll basis. It's a thing that we would have to take support with our finance department. Um, if it's something the council feels is a budget priority, we don't have a fund for this at this point. We'd have to budget for it. Um, you know, then the question is, why would we do stipends? And and I totally agree with the um, you know, we the town meeting did have this fund that people could apply for, and it wasn't um based on it it was just if you had expense, you could seek reimbursement, but it was an administrative burden on the person asking for it to document that they needed this funds, these funds. So a in many ways, a stipend is easier to manage from our point of view. Um, I think we're saying that it's not income based. It's based, it would it would be either committee based or some or something. I did give, put a stipend in a modest, very modest stipend for the Community Safety Working Group. Um, primarily because we recognized or I recognized that there's an intense amount of work that was being asked of this small group of people over a very short period of time. And it proved to be you know, it was a thousand dollars. It was a pittance compared to that amount of work that the members have had to put in for this to this work. Um, just so you know, the there is a proposal for a resident oversight board with a stipend that would go along with that. These are the two groups that the Community Safety Working Group are bringing forward. Um, one of the questions is, does it, does it, would it um overcome the barrier to participation? Is this a true? Uh, is this something that would do it? I think people would recognize it as being, I think the bigger point is that it would be a statement by the town saying, we want participation. And this is what we're where we stand to request to ask for um more participation. I think some broader ramifications for the school department as well. They have a lot of different committees. Would they be doing, following in the same um path? I think they would be almost have to. Um, so I think there are a lot of bigger issues um in terms of how we look at this from a town point of view. If this is a goal for the town council to say, we want to put significant funds into stipends for our committees. Um, do you want to pick and choose committees on who gets the stipends? Um, and what's the purpose of the stipends? So I think we, I think everybody's recognized that there's a lot of issues in play here. We need to give it some additional thought. Uh, I don't think that it will inhibit our ability to move forward with the um successor committee, because I think that can move forward. Um, but you know, again, it's uh hearing lots of different things from the council on this.
Um, great. Alyssa.
I'm sorry, I know I've spoken before, but one of my questions was how how do we leave this meeting? So we can say fantastic charge. Maybe add the part about an annual report um and moving on. And then the town manager can talk to us about stipends later. But I actually am concerned about the statement he just made that said, I think we can move forward without knowing this because I'm wondering if the three representatives Community Safety Working Group would actually argue that, in fact, we won't get the same pool of applicants if there isn't a stipend associated with this upfront. So are we saying you can go ahead and apply and you might get a stipend or a fund later? That surely seems to me that that would that would influence the pool of people who apply. So I'd like to hear a little more from Community Safety Working Group about that, given that they clearly had this conversation at length in their public meetings.
Pat, Brianna, or Alicia?
Um, I can just say that that is actually exactly why we wanted to present this all to you at the same time together because initially um Mr. Buckelman had only asked for our our um charge. But we suggested that we send these two additional documents with them so that there could be ample information for you all as to our reasoning for things. And so that we can sort of push this along quicker. And we do believe that the people that will look into this and pursue it further will need to have that information upfront that this will be a stipend committee. And that will absolutely change the the probably the response that we have and the diversity of the people who are interested.
Okay, Brianna, Pat, yes.
Yeah, if I may add, um, somebody made a comment about let's start a trial. We already did a trial. The trial is CSWG. You had the poll that you had. Part of it is the stipend attracted some people who wouldn't have joined. As much as, as much as we're all really wanted to do something about George Floyd and, you know, what was going on, but I think the stipend you know, was another factor. So we're not trying anything anymore. It it it, you know, it has worked. Thank you.
Thanks, Brianna.
I don't have anything to add. I think Ms. Walker and Ms. Pat said everything I wanted to say.
Okay, Shalene.
Yeah, I it's been really helpful hearing um um Ms. Owen, Ms. Walker, and Ms. Unabaku um talk about it in these different ways that I had not considered earlier and um that, I mean, I think the big shift in my mindset was really that we're not just looking to address the barriers. But this is about valuing diversity, valuing people. And I think it's important for us to commit to making this type and available. And then the the fund can be separately for for, you know, other stuff. But I think I'm ready to commit for this group. And and I know we have other groups to think about and we can do that, but this is the group we're working with right now. And um, I feel confident and I feel comfortable that uh we support the stipend for this group. And we should find a way to do that.
Um, I I'm going to try to summarize. We started with four questions. As a council, we wholeheartedly believe there should be a successor committee to the Community Safety Working Group. Um, we also believe that we should proceed with the town manager continuing to make that process happen along with the Community Safety Working Group. There were various comments about the charge. A couple seemed to be more around wordsmithing, but one or two were things like adding in an annual report to the town council. And then finally, we get to the issue of the stipend. And we're not going to resolve that tonight. We're not even going to resolve it in fully in any complete time. So what I'm going to ask is that the town manager return to the town council in two weeks and tell us what he is now planning to do with regard to the issue of stipend for this particular committee. And we will also talk about how we might go about exploring stipends and a fund to offset other costs for all other committees. And I think that's about as far as we're going to be able to go tonight. Uh, Mandy Jo.
We do have one motion on our motion sheet. Have we decided whether we can vote that one? Even though the committee hasn't formally been adopted yet, it's the SME status.
Yes, we do need to vote that. Okay. Um, Mandy Jo, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I move to designate special municipal employee status for immunity, safety and social justice committee.
Is there a second?
Second, DeAngelis.
Thank you. Darcy, your question.
Is that relevant both if it's town council or town manager?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and this is, we're we're looking at this as a town manager charge now, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we're going to start with Pat DeAngelis.
Hi.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an I, Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
Right, George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Shalene Baumell.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Um, I want to conclude uh this portion and then we will take a break. But first, I want to thank uh Pat and Brianna and Alicia for joining us tonight. And I want to thank all of the counselors. This has been a really very important, rich and in some cases, difficult discussions. And so I think um unless it's critical that you say a comment at this point, Alyssa or Darcy, I'd like us to move to a break.
Okay.
Alyssa.
I feel it's critical because I feel like we are leaving this committee in, we're we're saying to the town manager, move forward with this new committee. Um, potentially with that added to that sentence, add to the charge about the annual report and certainly an SME status we just voted. But if he's now going to advertise for applicants, they're not going to know if there's any kind of stipend. So we are trying to move this through as quickly as possible. So we have as little gap as possible. But practically speaking, we haven't solved the problem. And so are you saying because he's coming back in two weeks with a proposal on stipends that he's going to wait two weeks to start encouraging people to apply, or he's going to encourage people to apply starting tomorrow? Because, you know, the long, if we wait two weeks to hear a stipend proposal, like we're nowhere near close to making.
Alyssa, do you feel that the council needs to approve a stipend?
Um, do I feel the council needs to approve a stipend? I believe the town manager can find money if he has to find money. I just don't know what he expects in terms of us telling him he needs to do. Because if he's going to say, I'm not going to decide until after we see what the applicant pool looks like. That's a different thing than if he says, I'll come up with a number and tell you what it is. But I'm going to tell people there's going to be a stipend if they're willing to apply.
Okay, Paul, would you like to speak?
Sure. So so the summary that you read, Lynn, was to have me come back in two weeks with a stipend recommendation for this committee. I did, I would put in the advertisement that stipends are being, have been proposed or are being considered seriously for this committee, something like that to keep the, so we don't lose any time. Um, unless the council wants to vote tonight to make this to say, you you would like to see this. But I think that as I was framing it in my head, I would put in the advertisement that stipends are be have been proposed and recommended and um but exact dollars haven't been rec have been said yet.
Darcy.
Yeah, I just want to quickly retract my my suggestion that there be an annual report to the town council if it's because it's not it, you know, we're not creating the charge. It's not. And so I I I was the only one that mentioned that and I will retract.
You were not the only person that mentioned it. Once it was mentioned, at least three, if not four, other counselors have said something about it.
Oh.
Okay. Darcy, I mean Dorothy. Please unmute.
I'm crying. It's my finger doesn't move fast enough. I would like to amend what the town um manager wants to say. Stipends will be included. You don't have to say how much in the ad. But saying, we're thinking about, we're seriously considering, that's just hedging to me. We don't have to say how much since we haven't voted on it or you haven't decided, or I don't even know if we do vote on it. But I think you should just in the ad say stipends are included, whatever the words are that are for other committees. I don't think you have to state the amount in the ad if you want to keep moving forward.
Okay. Any other comment at this time?
If I may.
Yes, Pat, please.
I just want to thank all of you for this meeting. I think my observation, I feel that this is a productive meeting. I think I'm hopeful that moving forward, that BIPOC folks will be able to come to town council meeting and engage you guys. And that's what I experienced tonight. So I want to thank you all. I know, you know, some of the issues were difficult, but but we're able to talk about it. That's what's most important. Thank you very much and good night.
Thank you at also for being here, Alicia and Brianna. And for the council, we are going to take a five minute break. And please turn off your sound, turn off your video, and when you come back, turn your video back on. Okay, thank you. Um, we're going to go to uh action item B. It's the zoning bylaws. And we're starting with an update um that is in your packet. And uh Chris Brester is going to be um providing that with some additional comments made here and there by Mandy Jo Hanneke. Chris, would you like that on the screen?
Yes, please. And um I think I'm going to give a kind of general uh update and then Mandy Jo can um chime in with the more specifics. Um, I I guess I didn't realize that we were going to have this chart as part of the presentation. So anyway, uh have that in mind when I give the presentation. Um, so good evening. I'm Chris Brester, Planning Director. And the Planning Department and the Community Resources Committee have been working on a number of zoning amendments over the past several months. The list of amendments is based on priorities that were given to us by the town council as well as priorities that the Planning Department had established. And in addition, there is one zoning amendment that was introduced by members of the town council. And we also worked with the planning board on developing these priorities. The planning board um stated that one of their highest priorities was housing. So um in a brief overview of where we are with the current list, we're looking at rezoning of the parcel behind CVS. I don't know if you can make this um chart any bigger. It looks like it might be different from the chart I have. But anyway, um, so I'll just go with the. It looks like it might be different from the chart I have, but anyway, um so I'll just go with this chart. Okay, so accessory uses is something that we've been working on. Um apartments, mixed use buildings, um the rezoning of the parcel behind uh CVS that's owned by the town and also parking and access regulations as they relate to um dwellings. Um, so let's see, starting with um accessory supplemental dwelling units. So we're going to have a presentation tonight from Ben Bregger on the zoning amendment that has to do with accessory dwelling units. Um, this will be the first reading and I understand that you would have a second reading on October 18th. This was one of our more um what I should say, popular um zoning amendments and we got a good recommendations from both the Planning Board and the CRC. Um, the second one is apartments. So the apartments amendment is also being presented tonight, but it's only being presented in part. The rest of the zoning amendment is being worked on by the Planning Department and will brought, be brought back to town council early in 2022. The reason for separating this amendment into two parts has to do with the fact that the CRC and the Planning Board made recommendations on different versions of the amendment. And the Planning Department thought it would be better to bring to the town council an amendment that both bodies could support. So we spoke to the Chair of the CRC about this and uh arrived at the solution. Um, the third one is mixed use buildings. The mixed use buildings zoning amendment was reviewed and recommended by the Planning Board in August. And since that time, the Planning Department staff has determined that there's a lack of clarity in the description of the non-residential uses and that the zoning amendment needs work to clarify what non-residential use really means. We're planning to bring a revised version of this amendment to the Planning Board at its October 20th meeting and we will suggest that the board may like to update its recommendation. Uh, the CRC will be holding a new public hearing on mixed use buildings on October 26th. And Mandy Jo may um want to describe why the CRC is holding another public meeting, public hearing, excuse me. Uh, the next item is um the rezoning of the lot behind CDS. So uh the town owned parking lot behind CDS. Um, this zoning amendment was, was introduced by members of town council uh as a rezoning of the property from general residence to general business. Um, the Planning Department has been working with the proponents of this amendment and the staff has developed a proposed parking facility overlay district which will be presented to the Planning Board at the Planning Board's continued public hearing on October 6th. So that's this Wednesday, if you wanted to tune in. And then the CRC will hold a new public hearing on the rezoning on October 26th. And the last one is um parking and parking and access regulations. So this zoning amendment has been reviewed by the Planning Board and it's still evolving. The Planning Board has not made a recommendation on this one yet. The latest version of the amendment that will be presented to the, will be presented to the Planning Board on November 3rd, at which time we hope that the Planning Board will make a recommendation. The CRC will be holding a new public hearing on November 9th. So um we're looking forward to working with the town council and the CRC and the Planning Board to bring these zoning amendments to completion. And it's taken longer than we expected. Um, we have reviewed some of them with our town attorney at KP Law and we can share that information as we go along. So um now we have, if Lynn will permit.
I'm actually going to just ask if Mandy Jo has any comments on this chart.
Um, unless there are questions about why CRC needs to hold new hearings, I think the chart speaks for itself.
Okay, are there questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Dorothy.
I, I just want to say that this chart sums up the problem. Too much is being done in too short a time so that it's almost impossible for most human brains, not Mandy Jo's, but certainly mine, to keep in mind all of these aspects. And I really don't like separating the apartments um rezoning by law because then you don't get the whole picture and all of these things impact other things. And I, you know, I'm sitting down thinking, okay, I gotta write down in my date book, all these, these hearings and hearings and new things. And I've been working on this as a member of CRC. And every time we go, it's not the same amendment. It's a, it's trying to shoot something on a moving train. You just can't get it in your sights very well. So I, I am expressing distress and if you don't find this confusing, then you know, you're a better man than I. That's all I can say.
Kathy?
I just want to build on what Dorothy just said on with a focus on apartments. And I know we're going to get a, a presentation. But we had a presentation about apartments which had several parts. Now we're down to one part, which was not a focus of the public hearing, although it was part of it. So I'm wondering what triggers dates and what triggers new public hearing. When you separate out people, it feels like we've got a whole new proposal. So it's a question. Um, you know, and I see what Chris said and I understood on mixed use that it's going through some substantive changes. So it's not ready to even be thought of for a vote, uh, because there's more work to be done. But it feels to me that some, some differences were run into around apartments on the units, on how many units. And so the reaction was let's split it into two pieces rather than come back with us with a whole. And I don't underst, I just don't understand that and uh why fragmenting it doesn't trigger a whole new round. Uh, not that I want more. I think less would be better and more combined where we're seeing the whole picture, but it feels like it's triggering something quite different than what we first were looking at. Um, so it's, it's a question.
Mandy Jo, would you like to deal with that now, or would you like to deal with it when we get to that particular amendment?
Um, I'll deal, I'll deal with part of it now.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll talk about the split um and, and reasons for that when we get to the amendment, but um why it doesn't trigger a new hearing is because we already held a hearing on these particular amendments. It was part of the hearing notice. It was part of the hearing. These proposals were part of the hearing. And so there's no need for a new hearing because it was already held.
Okay. Are there any other questions about the chart? Uh, seeing none, then we're going to go on to this next part of this agenda item, which is the zoning bylaw amendment, article five, excepts, accessory uses, section 5.011, supplemental dwelling units. This is the first reading. There is no vote tonight. We do have a presentation. And I believe Ben, you're Brigger, um you're doing this one.
Yes, thank you, Lynn, and good evening, uh, members of town council. Um, so uh I was happy to share my screen, but someone beat me to it. So thank you. Um, this was a, a similar but a bridged version of the presentation I gave. Uh, I, looking at Chris's chart, I realized it was over four months, almost four months ago now. So um, I'll try to uh move through this quick, but also hit the key points. So um, we're proposing a change to uh the section of our bylaw that deals with accessory dwelling units. Um, just briefly, accessory dwelling units are small dwelling units or apartments that exist on the same property as a single family resident. So they uh their, their own independent living space with a kitchen bath and a sleeping area. Um, they're commonly referred to many names, carriage house, backyard bungalow, a granny flat, in-law suite. And the diagram shows how the different configurations they can be in association with the primary structure. So they can be detached, detached or contained um above a garage, within the garage, uh numerous different configurations, but the term ADU kind of covers all of those. Um, next slide. So um I just wanted to make sure I emphasize these three points because there's been a lot of um, uh, kind of like maybe some misunderstandings with uh some of the details of accessory dwelling units, and this is specifically to Amherst. So first of all, ADUs are only allowed in conjunction with a single family home. So if you own a duplex, um, you can't build a, an accessory dwelling unit. It's only for a single family home. Um, secondly, the ADU or the primary structure need to be owner occupied. So we're not talking about an instance where someone builds an ADU and then rents out both the home and the dwelling unit. And then secondly, we're really talking about it's only the provision of one ADU for a single family home. So you can't build more than one. You can't, you know, you couldn't have a single family home and then build two or three. It's just one. So I think that's just wanted to clarify that um before we go further. So um, there the next slide. So just briefly, I, I've mentioned this a few times, but in 2018, there was a, a bylaw proposal uh to change the accessory dwelling unit bylaw that was put forth. Um, and ours kind of takes the details of that and builds on it a little bit more. Um, that bylaw sought to increase the maximum square footage to 1,000 square feet. Um, right now they sit at 800 square foot um maximum. And uh or 1,100 for an ADA or um and similarly, it's 900 is the maximum right now for an ADA unit. So that bylaw did receive unanimous support from the Planning Board and did receive a majority of town meeting vote. Um, but did not get the two thirds that's required to pass. So it failed in town meeting. Um, if you go to the next slide and just wanted to point out um the relevant plans that kind of speak to the bylaw proposal, the master plan talks about specifically calls out making it easier to create attached and detached accessory apartments. The housing production plans, you know, does recommend possible by right provisions for accessory dwelling units um and the housing market studies uh specifically calls out um allowing supplemental apartments by right in all residential zoning districts. And if you can go next slide. I'm just going to go through these quickly. I just wanted to show folks examples of what these look like to give you a sense. Um, so I just uh went around town and found a few that have been permitted recently. So here's a 420 square foot studio, ADU on Bestin Street. Uh, it's at the end of the driveway there. Uh, if you can go to the next slide. Uh, a larger one, a 900 square foot, um, I think nearly, yeah, three bedroom. Um, ADU on Logtown Road. An example of, of, of a larger unit. Uh, if you go to the next slide. Uh, this one, um, you know, the thing with ADUs is they can be fully contained within the uh primary structure. So this there's that, this is actually has a, a, a permitted accessory dwelling unit in the basement, but you wouldn't really know it from the outside. Uh, it's a 560 square foot, one bedroom uh ADU. If you go to the next slide. Um, and the uh, uh, these can be, you know, built into historic homes as well. So this is the Grisk Mill on um on West Street, now near Groff Park, has an accessory dwelling unit of 540 square feet uh within the um historic structure. So if you can go to the next slide, um, so I'm just going to now talk about our bylaw proposal that uh we've put forth and has been reviewed by the Planning Board and CRC and recommended by those groups as well. So just the purpose of this bylaws to make um ADUs uh kind of streamline the permitting, permitting process, recognizing these are, are an important tool to meet the dynamic housing needs of Amherst residents. So this bylaw uh increases the maximum square footage to 1,000 square feet uh for all uh three types of accessory dwelling units contained, attached and detached. Um, it, it uh has by right provisions for most um types of accessory dwelling units uh to ease the permitting pathway. It adds design guidelines to make sure that the accessory dwelling units are compatible with the scale and character of the neighborhood. And um just for ease of uh um interpreting the bylaw just simplifies the structure and tries to uh make it easier to interpret for both uh staff and applicants. Next slide. Um, specifically, uh, you've probably noticed, I, I should have clarified, I'm using the term supplemental and accessory uh interchangeably. The, our bylaw currently calls them supplemental apartments. But really on a, you know, national, state, regional and industry level, they're uh always referred to as accessory dwelling units. So I wanted, we wanted to make our bylaw kind of uh in line with uh industry and uh kind of like national standards. So going, changing the terminology to accessory dwelling unit as opposed to supplemental apartment. Um, like I said, increasing the maximum square footage to 1,000 square feet and eliminating the minimum square footage. Um, allowing attached and contained accessory dwelling units by right uh as long as they're meeting the general requirements included in the bylaw. And then detached accessory dwelling units would be allowed by right. Um, if they're less than the 50%, less than 50% of the primary structure habitable space. If larger, um, they would be permitted through a special permit from the ZDA. And we've added design guidelines to encourage that the architecture and scale um of a detached ADU is compatible with uh and secondary to the primary structure. Um, so the goal with the um, actually you can go to the next slide here. This kind of just shows uh on a table, the, the in the gray faded out is the existing bylaw. And in bold is the 2021 proposal. So it shows on the left, the change in terminology. Um, in the middle is the square footage uh regulations that are changing. And then on the right side is the permitting pathways and how those uh differ. Um, I guess I should just uh note that the, the, the point of making the um uh detached ADU uh permitted through a special permit as they approach 50% of the primary structures to really have a little bit of more control over um how the, the appearance of the accessory dwelling unit. Um, because these really are supposed to be uh secondary to the primary structure. And if it, if they begin to approach the same size, um, it, it, it could create a situation where there's almost two uh homes on a, on a property. So um, we wanted to encourage um them to be smaller than the primary dwelling. And if you can go to the next slide, I think, uh, and in there, there's a host of resources available through the American Planning Association, AARP, mass.gov. Um, if you want to learn more and uh just go to the last slide. Um, certainly welcome feedback and questions, I guess, with the first reading. I'm happy to answer any questions and see what we can do for the next meeting. So thank you for your time, everyone.
Okay, are there questions from the council on this amend, uh proposed amended bylaw? Andy?
Sorry. So uh I, the one thing I may have missed in the bylaws, but so I have to ask a question. Um, what happens when the owner who has converted it uh or built a, a, a DU then ultimately sells the property? And um how do we assure that there's still a resident living on the premises? I have some experience actually with that because uh I know of res, rent of ha, a, a house that became a student rental house and they just, uh, the owner who took it over just rented the old ADU as a separate apartment to um, a graduate student who's willing to pay a little bit more to have a separate house, a, a separate apartment. So I think I had some background to ask that question.
Ben or who would like to dive in? Chris?
Well, I can say that if they did that, they would be in violation of their permit. Um, and the building commissioner can fine them for that. Um, they could also apply for a special permit to have um a converted dwelling instead of an ADU. Um, they could uh apply to have um a detached, well, no, that's the same thing as an ADU. But um there are mechanisms by which the building commissioner can um enforce the, the by which the building commissioner can, um, enforce the, the permit. Um, it's also true that many of our, um, enforcement is done by complaint. So a neighbor who sees this type of thing going on would call our office or email our office and say, um, you know, we've noticed that, uh, even though this person received a permit for an ADU, um, that they have, um, moved on, they've sold their property and that they are no longer in residence and that they're uh, the new owner is, um, renting out both, um, units. And so that new owner would be subject to fines and also, um, would be encouraged to get a new type of permit.
Me and Joe.
I would just like Chris to be able to give her report on the planning board's vote and I to be able to give my report on the CRC vote and George to give the GOL report.
Thank you. I totally agree. Um, so planning board report, Chris?
So on August eighteenth, the planning board voted six to zero with one member absent to recommend to town council to adopt the zoning amendment.
Okay. Community Resources Committee?
Thank you. Um, I want to just state that my report's fairly extensive, so I'm not going to do anything there, but I want to remind the council that this is a rescind and replace. So the document that is in the packet is the full new proposed bylaw and it would rescind the old one. Um, just to remind people of that, uh, CRC voted unanimously with one abstention to recommend the town council adopt the revisions to zoning by law, Article Five, accessory uses, section five point oh and one.
Okay. Um, GOL, George?
Thank you, Lynn. Um, this was given a clean bill of health by KP Law and on September twenty-ninth, GOL voted to declare it clear, consistent, actionable by a vote of four to zero with one abs- absent. Um, and the vote quantum is nine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Steve Schreiber.
Well, yeah, I'm going to vote in favor of this as I did on this CRC when it comes to a vote. But I did want to address some of the concerns about possible later conversions. So I, I think the real strength of this proposal is that it serves, does two things at once. Is it increases neighborhood density pretty much throughout the town. And so it, it's a very efficient way of increasing density because you're taking existing, I mean, there's existing roads, there's existing properties that have been developed and you're basically doubling the number of units on a particular property. It's a great way of keeping people on the property longer, having people afford more house than they think they can afford. You know, et cetera, et cetera. I think the conver- the question about the conversion or what happens next is very real. And I think that in a way, oh, the, the other thing I was going to say that the part about this I like is that it's neighborhood density and neighborhood stability. It is neighborhood stability because of the owner occupancy requirement, either in the accessory unit or in the main unit. But I think it needs to be widely known that that is the requirement because I think not everyone, most people don't know the nuances of our zoning bylaw. And in particular, no one's going to know that if it's between a contained ADU, y- y- you know, a, 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 a project that's a, a single family house with a contained ADU versus a duplex, like they're, they're basically the same thing. So an owner occupied duplex or an owner occupied house with an accessory dwelling unit. If it's contained or even if it's semi-contained or whatever the other terms are, they quack the same, they look the same. And the, you know, there's really not an easy way for someone to track what the regulations are or in fact what the, how that house came to have that particular condition. I would love to see some sort of a marking on the property card or something like that. So someone can easily look at how this particular property came to be a two-unit property. And so right now there's not, it's somebody says two family. It doesn't, there's no restrictions that are easily found on the property card. But we, we, I think we should, obviously I think we should do this. I think that public information about what this all means, you know, that there has to be owner occupancy is critical. And that the kinds of conversions that, you know, Andy's talking about, that those not be presented as, oh, just down the road, ask for a different type of permit. I mean, I think that this has to be kind of set in stone that this is why you're being allowed to do this. This is an owner occupied property. Not get it done this way and then three weeks later, apply for a non-owner occupied duplex.
Kathy?
I, just building on what Steve just said and Andy's question, um, Chris, as I understand what we're doing, we're trying to expedite. So except where the new, the request for the ADU would be more than fifty percent the size of the current one, they don't have to get a special permit. So they'd be going through just the planning board. So when you said permitted, they got a building permit, but you know, how do we label that in a way that, uh, both the person who's doing it understands that this is in perpetuity. It's supposed to be owner occupied, one or the other. Um, it's not quite clear to me because it's not the same as a special permit where I can see that if you violate your special permit, you know, it could be forfeited. So I ju- I just want to understand that distinction. So with the house that's a thousand, building a thousand square feet and they're only a eight hundred square foot house, they're going to go through special permit. So that one's clear to me. And I'll just give the example, I live in an old farmhouse and we bought it from an owner who'd gotten permission in the town to have a separate rental unit. Um, and he divided an upstairs, downstairs, two kitchens, two bathrooms and it was permanent. We took that out, but um, it looked a lot like what Ben just described as a self-contained ADU. Um, and he probably just, you know, the house was, had the right number of entrances and stuff. I don't even know, um, but if, if you look on an earlier property card, you would see the prior owner had a permit for that. I don't, I think you might see in our property card that we're not using it that way. I mean, that other kitchen is long gone and we were, you know, so you're understanding it's sort of, it's, it's always been owner occup- he, he lived in the house with that. So so how does anyone know and how do we keep it? I'm, I'm in favor of the ADU provisions. I just don't understand how you do after the effect to keep the intention of the owner occupancy.
Chris?
If someone is, um, renting a unit, they're required to, um, file a rental registration permit. So if they were renting one unit on the property, we would know about that. If they were renting two, two units on the property, we would know about that. Um, it's a requirement of the town law, the general bylaw. So, um, I think we have, you know, a, a few different safeguards.
So you just kind of thought, so that would be if you got that piece of information and you crossed it with why are there two? So is there a com- like a computer algorithm that just set up a little red flag like an uh-oh? Or does that mean someone has to stay on top of this all the time? I mean, would there be a way of, you know, saying, uh-oh, you know, and, uh, s- so it's the, it's the follow-up, um, provision. I can understand how that would work, but how would you know it? Yeah.
Chris?
Well, you would have to look into it. You would either call us or you would check on the GIS and the GIS does have information about rental registration and what kind of permit, um, started this, um, whatever it is, whatever it is existing. And the property card has that information. And so there are a lot of different, um, mechanisms, but the rental registration permit is actually on GIS if you go to permitting and complaints, I think. And there's a whole list of, um, all the permits that are granted for a property.
Um, I have a question that builds on this, so I'm going to just insert it at this point. And that is that could this be, and could we require that the deed on the property have some kind of statement restricting in the future sale that it has to be owner occupied? My recollection for condominium associations is that some of them require that a certain percentage remain owner occupied. And that that can pre- prevent somebody from renting them. Could such a thing happen?
I think we could put something in, um, in the registry, we, we could require somebody to put something in the registry that says that this is what it's being used for. I'm not exactly sure what that document would be, but I can talk to the building commissioner about that.
I, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Andy? Give it your hand.
You just asked the question that I was going to ask, which is why I lowered my hand because seemed to me that something should be recorded with a recorder of deeds to put a prospective buyer on notice when they're having an attorney do a title search of the property. Um, and I, I just don't understand how they would get notice without.
Thank you. I agree. Thank you. Darcy?
Yeah, I have, uh, that same concern that we've all been talking about, and it sounds like people have some good ideas about remedies. I just was concerned um, that, that Chris said, um, that if there were a complaint and a new owner was renting both properties, then, um, they might be able to remedy it by getting a different kind of permit, like for converted dwelling. And so, um, that would not be good. Because that would that would allow over time for these dwellings to be turned in to all student rentals. Um, so is that in fact something that could happen, Chris?
Yes, it is. Yes. I'm sorry for speaking out of turn, but yes, it is something that could happen. But they would have to get a permit from the zoning board of appeals in order to do that.
And there would be nothing preventing them from doing that?
I don't think so.
Unless there was a deed restriction.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
That's why I'm back on the deed restriction. Yes. Alyssa?
Thank you all for bringing up the deed restriction. That was certainly one of my biggest concerns. I do have two others and I'm sure they were covered and I'm just missing them in the report somewhere. I know that previously when we talked about this, probably whatever it was, Ben, four months ago, that one of the concerns raised was that people who live in smaller homes would not be able to build ADUs by right if they were making them a reasonable size because of that fifty percent primary structure habitable space requirement. So somebody with a fourteen hundred square foot cape is out of luck for building, um, for building an ADU by right with requirements. So are we doing that? Be, why are we doing that? What was the logic behind that in terms of, are we saying that we feel confident based on the way all the different neighborhoods are laid out in Amherst? That we're fine with preventing people with relatively small lots from over densifying, even if they live quite close to the street? Okay, let's give my house an ex- an example. I live on North Pleasant and Fairfield Street. I could be using half of my backyard, three quarters of my point two nine backyard to use to build a supplemental dwelling unit, but I can't do it by right. But if I'm a wealthier person who owns a bigger house, um, with it, then I can go ahead and do it by right. So how do we explain to people what the point of that was? Are we assuming that every single small house lives on a small lot? Are we not recognizing that there are some houses that are relatively small because they were built in the forties or the seventies and have relatively large lots, but this would prevent those homeowners from doing the fifty percent of primary? What's the logic behind that?
I'm going to pause with that and we'll get, and then come back because I think you said you had a second question. Chris?
Um, I just wanted to say that I think the, um, impetus for that was that we didn't want um, it to, to appear that there were two houses of the same size on the same property because that's not really something that we allow in Amherst in our zoning bylaw, um, two single family houses on the same property. So we didn't want it to appear that there were two exactly same size houses. So we thought if we required a special permit for um, the house that is more than fifty percent of the uh, floor area of the existing house, that that would, um, compensate. And I think that uh, topic was brought up in a, in an earlier meeting. Possibly Mr. Schreiber brought it up.
Alyssa?
So I'm not saying I'm satisfied with that answer, but I understand the the theory behind it, but it's actually not based on anything other than appearance. It is just some sort of reassurance to neighbors as opposed to actually having meaning based on lot coverage. It's just how it looks to some aesthetic sensibility that is not a defined aesthetic sensibility. So obviously I'm not happy with that. Um, the other thing I want to ask about, and I know that this is a few and far between case, perhaps unlike what we talked about with the idea of being able to apply for a converted dwelling, like getting it through this way and then three weeks later, going ahead and applying the other way. And obviously that would depend on staff to be informing whoever's on the ZBA at this point, that that was not appropriate. And the deed restriction really plays an important role in that. The other concern that's been brought up repeatedly associated with this for years, including back at town meeting, is we have homes in town, again, tiny number. We have homes in town that are ostensibly owned by college students because their parents put them as the owner of the house. In that case, if you're this, if you're a twenty-year-old owner of the house because your parents put your name on the deed, then you can fill up both houses with college students because you're the owner. We've had that problem in the past with someone who was not a college student, who was an LLC owner from out of town, who alleged that he lived in the house when he didn't. So I know it's supposed to be complaint driven and we're depending on neighbors to drop a dime on each other. But what is it that we're doing to prevent beyond the deed restriction, which has heretofore not been discussed, but is really important that got brought up to county, to county council? Do you have any thoughts about how we manage the fact that we aren't always going to be thrilled with who ends up being homeowner?
I, I don't have an answer to that right now, but I'll think about it and I'll talk to Rob Mara. I wish she were here tonight.
Okay. Dorothy, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Ben, you have your hand up and Maureen as well.
Just briefly, um, I was just going to add the, uh, for, um, ho- smaller homes, a, 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 a attached or a fully contained accessory unit would still be allowed by right. Um, so I do have that option uh, to avoid the special permit, um, for the detached unit. And I, uh, I would say too, most, most municipalities in Massachusetts, it's not that Amherst needs to do what everyone else is doing, but um, do not have any by right provisions for any ADU. Uh, some of them have by right for detached ADU. Um, but most don't. And so by allowing, um, you know, Amherst is really ahead of the game here by allowing any type of ADU, uh, by right, not to mention, uh, a cer- uh, certain detached accessory dwelling unit. So just to provide a little bit more context.
Maureen, did you want to comment?
Yes, I, I, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, uh, mention about, you know, how, how does the town, um, you know, determine if there's a possible violation, um, eh, without the assistance of, of neighbors to sort of be the, you know, the, the unofficial watchdogs, um, you know, so upon a change of ownership. Well, so firstly, there are general requirements for all, uh, ADUs, uh, being contained, attached or detached. Um, it's part of the proposal and it's also part of the existing ADU, uh, section. Um, one, and I'll just walk you through just two of them, um, that talk about, um, sort of, you know, who's living there and how do we figure out, you know, if it's owner occupied or not? So upon a change of ownership, uh, the new owner would need to provide a, a updated management plan um, to either this, uh, the spe- uh, the ZBA or to the building commissioner, uh, depending if it's by right or by special permit. And the management plan, um, um, highlights, uh, you know, information about parking, um, uh, how they manage the property, if it's owner occupied or not. So that's one sort of trigger, if you will. And then also, um, for all rental properties in Amherst, um, there is a annual rental permit registration that Chris had mentioned before. Uh, again, it has to be, uh, resubmitted on an annual basis, um, which, um, is, uh, gets into how many bet- how many, uh, units are, are rented? How many, uh, tenants are there? How many parking spaces are there? Is it owner occupied or not? Um, and so that's another, uh, sort of trigger for inspection services to, uh, uh, take note of. And, um, lastly, so although, uh, GIS are, are, are amazing, uh, GIS program that is accessible to the public, um, has this sorts of information. You can look up, uh, you know, site plan review decisions, special permit decisions, you can look up rental permit registration, um, You can look up rental permit registration updates. We're also providing, it's called OpenGov, where you can find this information as well. And it is much more transparent for the public, actually. And so the town is streamlining that now. And what's great about it is that it is sort of, you can provide sort of Excel. It's a, I guess, a digital form that we can expand upon. And so such questions could be, how was this use allowed? And the form would then could fill out if it was by, you know, a special permit for a ADU or by the building commissioner for a contained ADU. And currently, it already goes into whether it's owner occupied or not owner occupied, and how many units are being rented. And so that information can actually be exported into Excel and exported into GIS. So we can definitely take a very, a closer look at this as the years go on to see how this is being documented and if needed, and when it happens, being enforced if there's any issues. I just wanted to mention those points.
Andy, Joe, you had your hand up. Did you have additional comment? Okay. Dorothy?
Okay. I don't know if this has been addressed, but when we talk about deed restriction, how do we do deeds? We have the main house that was on the lot, and that has a deed. And then we have a accessory ADU. And I believe that the owner can live in either one of those. So what status does the, once you have built an ADU, does it get a separate deed? And I mean, the fact is that the owner has the option of living in either one of them. So the deed restriction, I think, gets a little complicated. So how would you do it?
I think that's a legal issue that we're gonna let somebody else work out. But I think we've all put on the table, or several of us have put on the table, that we'd like to see some kind of deed restriction. Steve Schreiber?
Yeah, so owner occupancy is not an unusual requirement in land use in Amherst or anywhere else. So for example, affordable housing, we have a thing called owner-occupied duplex, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And so I was actually doing a spot check of some deeds around that I know of to see if I could see language that I couldn't find it. I'm not a lawyer. I don't know how that works. But I just want to get back to this idea of accessory. So accessory, supplemental, subsidiary, they basically all mean the same thing. So for me, that's critical. So this is not two primary houses on the same lot. This is a primary house on the same lot in an accessory unit. To me, accessory means something in support of. It doesn't mean something larger than or something that's, it's not a duet, you know, it's not two actors in leading roles. It's one actor in a leading role and another actor in a supporting role. So for me, the size matters. And also for me, the number of occupants matters. And so both of those are part of the proposal, that there be a slight difference in that. So in terms of the example of the already small houses, one of the what ifs that I like to present is like, let's say that I have a 900 square foot existing house, which do exist in Amherst. And actually, I have one option of building a 450 square foot house. I have another option of building an 1,800 square foot house so that the 900 square foot house becomes the accessory dwelling unit. So it's complicated. I don't think that this is a perfect bylaw. I'm proud of us for getting this far, and I hope we don't let those kinds of nuances get in the way, because I think that this is a a proposal that's gotten a lot of scrutiny from us, from this board, from the CRC, from the planning board, from the public. And I think it's ready to be voted on as is. Well, I would love to see the deed restriction part.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Steve. Kathy?
My question is on deed restriction. And I think if we Google it, we're gonna find that there are towns, whether they're in Massachusetts or other places that have them. Do we have to write it into our code is my question. So in addition to everything we just said about ADUs, there has to be one line in there that would be part of our municipal, either building code or other code to make sure if we find out that this is something we can do, which I think we can, and we find examples, it's just, and you don't have to answer it, Chris, you know, it would be like, if we need to write it in and we all would like to see it in, could we see a version that figures that out? And I know we're on Zoom, and we're never supposed to Google anything on Zoom, but I think we will find it. Having not thought about this before, so it's a request that if we could write it in, and it's the sentiment of the group that we'd want to have it there, that we would add a line.
Chris, I'm gonna ask, do you come back to us in two weeks with a resolution on that rather than continue to debate it here? Steve, you still have your hand up. Mandy, Joe?
Yeah, I guess I just can't let this discussion go past without saying I have real concerns about adding a deed restriction requirement to this. That doesn't mean I wouldn't vote for this if it gets put in, but I don't know whether it's necessary. I don't know whether it's proper. I don't know whether it's appropriate. I do, you know, when Steve was speaking and his issue with accessory, that made me think, well, maybe a deed restriction makes sense then because it has to be accessory. And is there a rental situation where a renter would want an accessory dwelling unit? And that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, is that a possibility? But, you know, this council and this town likes to demonize students. But students aren't the only people that rent apartments. They're not the only people that rent houses. They're not the only people that need rentals or want an accessory dwelling unit or want a house rental. And to try and restrain all of that, and I guess I'm just getting tired of all of it. And so I just can't let this go saying, with people implying that the whole council would be for a deed restriction, because I can't say I am right now. So.
George?
I think if this suggestion goes forward, and I'm not sure, like, Mandy, I have my reservations, but if it does go forward, you're gonna need to consult KP Law and get a legal opinion.
Yes, we will. Thank you. Shalini?
Yeah, I'd like to also hear what would be the implications of that, because what I hear from people is that the more complicated we make things, the more expensive it becomes to own homes. And we're trying to simplify it for the homeowners here. We're trying to create an easy pathway for them to create a new source of revenue or to downsize and be able to afford living here. And the more we create restrictions, it's kind of defeating the purpose of simplifying it. So it would be helpful to just get a sense of what that's gonna look like, what would be the pros and cons of doing that?
Darcy?
Yeah, I would just say, for me, a critical component of this and why I would support it is because it's clearly tied to owner occupancy. And that's why there would be a deed restriction, is so that that can carry through in perpetuity. And if it can't be carried on in perpetuity, then, you know, I'd have a harder time supporting it.
Thanks, Darcy. Are there any other comments? We're not taking a vote tonight. We have asked that the Director of Planning come back to us with some information about deed restrictions and determine the appropriateness of that and how it would be accomplished. And that will be part of our discussion on the 18th. At that point, this will come up for vote. And I believe, George, you said the legal opinion says nine votes in favor, correct? Okay. With that, I'd like to move on to the next one, which is the zoning bylaw amendment, Article 3, Use Restrictions, Section 3.323 Apartments. Again, this is the first reading, and I believe, Maureen, you're doing this presentation. Am I correct?
So I'm gonna share my screen. So, okay, so thanks, thanks, everyone. Hopefully, you can see my screen. So bear with me for one second. So, okay, so, yeah, thank you, everyone. So I would like to talk about the zoning amendment proposal that we're presenting tonight on Section 3.323 Apartments. But to reflect back on the last months as part of this zoning amendment proposal, you know, the planning department has explored various items as possible zoning amendments. And starting with number one, first consideration is to remove the maximum number of units allowed per building, opposed to having a maximum of 24 units per building. Updates standards and conditions, they get into diversifying the bedroom count for 10 units or more by requiring that those units have different sorts of bedroom counts for each that no more than 50% of the total dwelling units can have the same bedroom count. And then a provision about enclosed parking, that it needs to be designed to minimize the visibility from the public right away. We also considered revising the permit path for apartments to have it by special permit approval in the general business zoning district and by site plan review in the Village Center Residence Districts. And we explored looking at provisions for citing apartment buildings within the general business zoning districts. So the planning department is putting a pause on some of these items that I just laid out. And at this time, we are only setting forth a proposal that talks about the permit path for apartments, which is, again, to have apartment buildings be reviewed and approved by special permit in the general business and have it required that it would be by site plan review approval in the Village Center Residence. And so keeping the focus on the Village Center Residence and the general business district, this map shows, well, this map shows actually all the districts that allow apartment buildings. And those include, again, the Residence Village Center, the General Residence, the Business Village Center, the Limited Business, the Neighborhood Business, and the General Business zoning districts. But this, tonight's proposal, is only gonna focus on the Village Center Residence and the General Business. And so if you can see my mouse, in North Amherst, there is the Village Center Residence at the intersection of North Pleasant and Meadow Street. In the downtown Amherst area, we have the General Business, which is our commercial, you know, obviously, our core business area and commercial area. Over here is our East Amherst Village at sort of the intersection of Main and Southeast Street and College Street. And that is where there is a cluster of Village Center Residence zoning districts. And then here, in the southern portion of Amherst, is the Pomeroy Village Center, where there are Village Center Residence zoning district at the intersection of Pomeroy and West Street. And this slide shows the Table 3 dimensional regulations. So it's showing, this slide is showing which zones allow apartments, but in a different way. It's showing the columns that are highlighted in blue represent zoning districts that have various dimensional regulations for apartments, including the basic minimum lot area, additional lot area per family, and minimum lot frontage requirements. And so the Village Center, the General Residence, the BL and the BN zoning districts, the use of this Table 3 provides safeguards from perhaps densities that, you know, from larger apartment complexes to occur in those zoning districts, if that is something of concern. And the columns that are in red, including the BG and the BBC, those are, you know, business districts primarily that encourage sort of a mixture of uses. And those districts do not require basic minimum lot area, additional lot area per family, and minimum lot frontage per footnote B. And so those are the, those two zoning districts that are, again, are highlighted in red, the BG and the BBC, those would have more impact to increase infill or housing density. If, let's say, if the cap was removed to allow 24 units or more per building. And in the other zoning districts, which are highlighted in blue, Table 3 is a safeguard from having sort of, you know, sprawling apartment buildings or, you know, undesirable numbers of units, if that is a concern. So again, this slide is showing, you know, again, what we're proposing, which is for the Village Center Residence, we're proposing that it be allowed by site plan review and then the general business allowed by special permit. And this slide shows all the other zoning districts that allow apartments and do not allow apartments. And so the rationale for for our proposal for allowing apartments to be allowed by site plan review in the Village Center Residence is that, you know, the purpose of the RVC zoning district is to provide for residential neighborhoods within and adjacent to village centers that are of medium densities and that allow a limited mix of residence and office uses. The proposal encourages more multifamily housing in the RVC zoning district by permitting apartments by site plan review approval. And the existing zoning bylaw safeguards, including Table 3, the dimensional regulations. And in another section, Section 3.2855 has a provision about, you know, if there's housing that's adjacent to farmland conservation overlay zoning district, there is a provision about having a buffer between the apartment building and an existing farm. That was a discussion about in North Amherst properties that are on the northerly side of Meadow Street, about an active farm. And so there is a safeguard that, you know, if there was a house, a duplex apartment building that was built on any of those parcels on the northernly side of Meadow Street, that would have to have 150-foot buffer from that, from the rear property line to where the house would be cited. And so that provides another safeguard. And so the rationale for allowing apartments in the general business by special permit is that, you know, the purpose of the BG zoning district is to provide for a mixed-use area of high density containing a wide variety of commercial, office, residential, institutional, civic, and cultural uses. The planning department encourages more mixed-use buildings to be located in downtown, particularly along the main corridors, commercial corridors that promote and enhance the vibrancy of active streetscapes. And that is reflected in our proposed mixed-use bylaw amendment. This proposal encourages mixed-use buildings over apartments in the BG zoning districts by changing the permit path from apartment, for apartments to special permit through the zoning board of appeals. And so the rationale for not moving forward with the other items that we highlighted for consideration is, you know, after thoughtful discussions with the planning board and the CRC and receiving input from the public, the planning department would like more time to work on some considered amendments to achieve the best outcome, particularly in regard of to achieve the best outcome, particularly in regard of lifting the cap of the twenty four unit cap per apartment building in the BV, in the BG and the BBC zoning districts, which would have greater impact in these districts due to, you know, basic minimum lot area, additional lot area per family and minimum lot frontage not being required. Possible, possible considerations for future discussion is to consider increasing the unit cap per building, apartment building to a specific number that's reasonable for both residence and development, perhaps that's townwide, or perhaps that's by zoning district. And consider adding a new use classification to the zoning bylaw such as three unit buildings like a AKA, AKA a triplex or a four unit use known as a quadplex. So talking about both, you know, if future discussions are to be had is talking about the minimum number and then also the maximum. So apartment buildings, the definition is a minimum of three units per building with a maximum of twenty four unit units per building. And perhaps it should be looked at again of, of focusing both on the minimum and the maximum and finding where if, if saying, you know, twenty four units, ma, you know, having a sort of open ended, you know, cap or get removing the cap altogether, perhaps that doesn't make sense. Perhaps there should be a tier or a, a number that's lower that works for, for everyone. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
Yes. I would like to start by having you explain exactly what is before us. Well, no, excuse me, I'm gonna first of all ask for the planning board report, the CRC report and the GOL report. Planning board?
Planning board, on September first, the planning board voted six to one with one person opposed, Janet McGowan opposed, to recommend that town council adopt the complete apartments zoning amendment, including the change in permitting for apartments in the RVC and BG zoning districts. So in other words, they, they voted to recommend everything that Maureen has described tonight, including the change of permitting. Tonight, we're just focusing on that particular change of permitting. So in essence, the planning board has recommended that change.
Okay, CRC?
Thank you. Before I get to the vote and all, I said I would address why this split is logical and I want to start with our vote. Back in, I think it was January, when we voted to direct the town manager to work on zoning priorities. By March fifteenth, twenty twenty one was the first set. And there were two separate bullet points in this first set. One bullet point, well, there were three, six, eight bullet points actually in that set. Two of which, one of which read move apartments to SPR in more zoning districts. In other words, one of the bullet points was move apartments to site plan review in more zoning districts. And a separate bullet point was revise the apartments definition. So even back in January of this year, when the town council directed the manager to work on zoning priorities, we envisioned these as potentially separate items for consideration. The planning department had come forward with a combined proposal that had them combined. And through many conversations at CRC, conversations at the planning board, you've heard that CRC voted to recommend a different version than the planning board did. And, and after those conversations, there was a recognition that a portion of this combined proposal that combined two separate priorities into one proposal still needed work. And so the request was to room, to split out those two priorities again and address the one priority, which was to move site plan review, move apartments into site plan review in more zoning districts and keep the one priority apartments definition as a work in progress that needs to go forward. So with that explanation, on September fourteenth, CRC voted unanimously, unanimously to recommend the town council adopt the revisions to zoning bylaw article three use regulations, section three two three, three point three two three apartments and article twelve definitions as revised. So in other words, CRC voted unanimously, not only to recommend that what we're seeing today, but to recommend what was a different version than the planning board version that actually did something different. And that was reported in my part two, but we're not dealing with tonight. So this, this, this proposal came, comes to this council with a unanimous CRC recommendation.
George?
Thank you, Lynn. KP Law actually reviewed both proposals and both were given a clean bill of health. On nine twenty nine, GOL voted to declare just the particular change we have in front of you this evening. To be clear, consistent, actionable, the vote was three to zero with one abstaining and the vote quantum again is nine.
Mandy Jo, did you have a further clarification?
No, I have a question for the town manager on the vote quantum.
Okay. I'd like to clarify that, if you could, go ahead, Mandy Jo.
Okay, so in January, the MGL chapter forty A, section five changed and now states in part, which, which is where the vote quantum requirement is, now states in part, quote, provided however, that the following shall be adopted by a vote of a simple majority of all members of the town council. Number one, an amendment to a zoning ordinance or bylaw to allow any of the following as of right. A multifamily housing or mixed use development in an eligible location. Two, an amendment to a zoning ordinance or bylaw to allow by special permit, a multifamily housing or mixed use development in an eligible location. And I had asked the town manager, given that this was split out from something else that would have required nine, whether the fact that these are separate now means that this is required seven instead of nine, a majority vote. Has the town manager been able to clarify that with KP Law?
Paul?
I would have to look at the KP Law opinion. I don't have an answer for you right now, but I can, I can dig into that and I'll look for it right now.
Okay. So now we're moving to questions, Kathy.
First, I want to make a comment on Mandy, when you said we voted on apartment priorities in January. Some of the we in the room tried to split out the specifics. We voted a big, long list. We did not go through each of those. So I just want to make sure the record's clear that there was a protest on packaging. So coming back to what's before us now, I would much prefer seeing a whole apartment proposal because it's interactive with the issue of site plan review or special permit. And I'm prepared to make a motion when we are talking about a vote that we delay a vote until, not vote on it until we get a whole proposal. That said, I totally support moving BG to site plant, to a special permit. I think it's important for all the reasons that Maureen said, we want to encourage mixed use downtown. But I also think it's important to keep the current site special permit for RVC. If you look back on Maureen's table, one of the things you'll notice is RVC would be the only zoning with a site plan review on it. All the other districts, all zoning districts would require site plan review. In addition, within RVC, if you wanted a townhouse, if you wanted a duplex, if you wanted a subdivisible unit, if you wanted congregate housing, they would all require a special permit. Apartments are larger and one of the things that's protective about special permit is a consideration of what the site looks like, what the abutters look like, there can be required setbacks. And yard, I don't always use the term right, from the street, from the sign that go beyond the minimums. If you look at her dimension table, that little footnote A, which is very worrisome, is next to lot coverage, building coverage, it's likes to height and it's next to floors. So by, there could be waivers and exceptions that these buildings could be bigger, taller, more floors, and we're potentially going to see a proposal that says the twenty four cap isn't listed. So I think for simplicity, and we talk about streamlining, SP across the board, moving BG to an SP is really important. And I started looking, it's not an easy read at our zoning bylaws on what's under special permit. And it's a long list of conditions with a lot of authority to really take input and put conditions on. And if you look back at that map on what we're talking about, RVC are these three very small areas in three parts of town. And if you try to look at the street where one is in an RVC and one is in a business, a, a village center and one is in a general residence, you can't really see what the difference is here. I don't even know where they came from. But everything else would be a special permit. It, it doesn't make sense to not have it continue that way. It's simple. It's easy to understand. And it brings an additional authority, the zoning board of appeals has to have a super majority. And in our case, we've got five members on the board. There would have to be four vote, votes and with conditions for this, we weakened, in my opinion, the site plan review to only have a majority of the people who were the subcommittee that were doing site plan review and only of those voting members who cast a abstentions didn't. So zoning board of appeal would have to be strongly for it. There's an appeal process. So I think there is a strong reason and there's a good reason for special permit for apartments, even with just twenty four, that limit. It, it can be a quite a large building or set of buildings. And the, what Maureen talked about is the lot sizes will limit it. If you look at several of these districts, we've got ownership maps now, they're all owned by the same person, so they could combine lots. And we could get enormous buildings on some of these. In North Amherst, it's adjacent to farmland. So I think we have a protective mechanism in town, special permit is protective and I would leave it on. So I will, I'm in favor of part of this, moving BG to special permit, but I would keep it special permit for these three districts and for all the districts where apartments are allowed. It, it requires a discussion. It doesn't stop it in its path. Look at all the apartments that we have around town. We have them. And twenty four had a rationale, they're garden apartments where you get to know each other. So a discussion about the size matters, but this is a package deal and it's important. It's not small for these three districts. So there's no reason to move in one direction on one and the other direction on the other when all the rest townhouses and everything else is special permit. And I'll just stop there because it just, the rationale just doesn't make sense to me. And I understand how you could argue the other side of it, but I'm looking across all the use tables. So I said, no, let's have some consistency within our bylaw. Townhouses, duplexes, they all require special permits in RVC. Thank you.
Lynn, may I raise a point of order?
Yes.
Do we have a clock? Are we using? Please try to keep to a three minute limit. I know this, this is complicated and difficult, but and maybe we need to put the clock up just to remind ourselves.
Athena, could you do that, please? May take a little bit to do that. Mandy Jo, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Not as a chair, I can wait my turn.
Okay, Dorothy?
In reference to the clock, I will be very, very brief. I agree with everything Kathy said. If there are any listeners in the audience, there was so much matter in that statement that it may be hard to grasp at all, but they are all excellent points. My question is, how can you know what you want, where you want to put something if you don't know what it is? So how can you know if you want to put apartments in the village centers? If you don't really know what the apartment rule is and whether the cap is going to be removed, and the answer is you don't, you don't. So we, to remove the special permit from the apartments in the village centers before we know what that apartment could be, it does not make common sense. Thank you.
Evan?
Yeah, so I wanted to respond to Kathy because I think we're, we noticed the same thing but had different conclusions. Kathy is looking at this and saying, it's SP in every other district and we require a special permit for townhouses and duplexes. So that means we should require it for apartments. But I think the opposite of that is maybe it's time that we look at whether we should be requiring special permit for townhouses and for duplexes. Let's be clear about what a special permit is versus site plan review versus by right. By right says, we know we want it in the area. Site plan review says, we want it in this area, but we want to be able to look at it first. We want to have some input. And special permit says, we don't really think it's appropriate for this area, but, but if we can get a super majority of the ZBA to be convinced, we'll let it be there. So if we want something in an area, if we think something's appropriate for an, for an area, we should be going with site plan review, not special permit. Special permit is we're making an exception to what we would normally allow there. Now, I think Maureen put up a really interesting map that showed the districts where we allow apartments. And one thing you'll notice is it's a very small part of our town. We don't allow apartments in very much of our town. It's the, i- i- it's, it's tiny land area. And sometimes we get confused by that because we see apartments in areas where they couldn't be built today. In district two Colonial Village, that's in the RN, that couldn't be built today. In district one Puffton Village Brandywine, that's in the RN, that couldn't be built today. District five, South Point, the Boulders, those are in the RN, those couldn't be built today. So let's recognize, we're talking about a very small part of our town that we're saying this is where it's acceptable to put apartments. And I think we have to follow through with that. If we say that we want apartments in our downtown and village centers, then, then we need to create a permitting pathway that matches that. Saying that we want apartments in our residential village centers, but creating the permitting pathway being special permit doesn't make sense. And I'm not willing to justify that by saying, well, townhouses require a special permit. Well, maybe they shouldn't. Maybe it's time we look at that. The last thing I want to say is last, last week, by a near unanimous vote, this council adopted a comprehensive housing policy. We, 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 we set forth a commitment to addressing this town's housing crisis. And part of that housing policy that we adopted near unanimously was a commitment of a minimum of eight hundred and fifty units above eighty percent AMI over the next five years. That means that we need to start making changes now, not delaying, not start making changes now that can help us meet this goal. And part of that is looking at our permitting pathways and saying, if we think apartments belong in our residential village centers, we need the permitting pathway to match that. And then we need to look at other opportunities to do that as well. But I support us doing this and I support us doing it now and not delaying.
Mandy Jo?
First, everything Evan said, but I've reminded in this conversation of something that Jerry Weiss said in town meeting right before town meeting in a similar zoning discussion where there was a discussion as to whether a mixed use building could be built on University Drive. And his response was, if we can't put it there, where can we put it in town? And I'm going to, Jerry might not be happy with me, but say if we are unhappy with putting apartments in our residential village centers, medium density, intended medium density village centers. If we can't put apartments there by generally saying that's where they should belong, site plan review, as Evan just said, where can we put them? It's time for us to admit we need more housing and we need to make the permitting pathways easier. To Kathy's point about duplexes, actually, two of the three duplex ones are site plan review and RVC. The only one that's not is non-owner occupied, owner occupied and actually affordable housing, affordable duplexes, most of the time those are not owner occupied, not all the time, are site plan review. So you're, you're just wrong that it's always SP. But we need to be moving more to site plan review and admitting that, you know, duplexes should be allowed and be declared suitable in the residential village center, medium density. Apartments start at three units. Everyone thinks about apartments as twenty four, thirty, fifty. Apartments in our town start at three units. If a three unit triplex is not suitable for the RVC, we've got problems in this town in meeting the comprehensive housing policy. we've got problems in this town in meeting the comprehensive housing policy we just adopted. And the last thing I want to say is the entire night, everyone's been saying, we need to do more comprehensive, we need to do more comprehensive. We can't take these one at a time, we have to wait for the whole thing. A month ago, two weeks ago, three months ago, two months ago, everyone was saying just the opposite. You're taking on too much, you're moving too fast, we're confused as to everything that's going on, and you need to do these in smaller chunks. Well, here's a smaller chunk. And now everyone's saying, how dare you try it in a smaller chunk? And to me, that just, I don't know what to make of that.
Shalani?
Yeah, I, okay, so I want to talk about how this small piece is actually correcting what's flawed in my mind right now. Right now, apartments can be built with SPR in downtown, whereas we had a really healthy discussion in CRC where we said that downtowns, we want retail. We don't want to just allow, make it easier for apartments to be built. So we're actually correcting that by saying, okay, downtown should require special permit. And by the same logic, where do we want to cultivate and encourage more residential apartments? Is in the village centers. And so let's make it easier over there with SPR. So we're actually correcting an existing flaw right now. A developer can come and do that with SPR in downtown. And we don't want that, we want mixed use downtown so that we have a very small retail area in downtown. And we're trying to correct that ASAP by putting this in place, right? The other thing, the concern that people have that SPR will make it like anyone can do anything, no. It's very clearly as Maureen has in her presentation, there is a basic minimal lot area that's required for building an RVC, which is fifteen thousand square feet. There has to be a front setback, fifteen feet. There has to be maximum building coverage of only twenty-five percent, maximum lot coverage of only forty percent, and maximum only three floors. So we have very well-defined criteria to ensure that it's not going to be something crazy that's going to happen. It's just that if you want to bring down the cost, consistency means, yeah, we're consistent with the master plan, we're consistent with the zoning requirements, that certain zones have been created so that we encourage a particular kind of development over there. And so the RVC, the kind that it encourages is that we want more density of residential there. So within the particular, okay, now I'm repeating myself. But all I want to emphasize is that we have enough well-defined criteria to make sure that the residential is built, but we bring down the cost of construction and so forth by streamlining it, allowing it to be more easily built where we want it built. Thank you.
Darcy?
Yeah, I just want to briefly say that I strongly support Kathy's suggestion that we delay deciding about apartments until we have the full package of of everything related to it. I am, I am, I am confused about where it comes from that that we should be loosening up requirements in the village centers for for allowing apartments. I don't know why we would change that. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. Anyway, yeah, that's, I'm with Kathy on that.
Kathy? Just, Shalani just read off the dimension tables, and I'm just wondering if those who are willing to go to SPR would remove footnote A, which is applied in the RVC to maximum building coverage, which means you could cover more. Footnote A would remove footnote A from applying to maximum floors, which means it could be more than three floors, would remove it for minimum and maximum height, which means it could be more than thirty-five feet. Some of those dimensions are protective, but if they can be, all be removed, then they're less protective. So if the thinking is SPR will be protective where, because we've got these dimensional controls, but then you can waive the dimensions. So these are interactive in terms of the size of the building. Those footnotes have usually been used to allow things to get bigger. I guess they could be used to require them to be smaller, which they can under. But that footnote is a troubling footnote when it goes to building coverage, floors, and height. That's it. Dorothy?
I had meant to ask before, when I raised, I think it must have been the CRC meeting, about the having apartment complexes near protected agricultural land, I was told of the hundred and fifty feet buffer, which is included in this report. But the question is, is that hard and fast, or is that yet one more thing that can be waived? Because if so, then it's not an assurance that we're protecting our farmland.
Chris?
Am I muted? No. So the applicant can work with the permit granting authority to request that the hundred and fifty-foot buffer be reduced. And if you look at page four of your apartment's planning board report to town council, it explains that permit granting board or authority may reduce this distance requirement where screening, substantial vegetation, land contour, or other features of the site are deemed to provide sufficient buffering, and where such a change is consistent with the purposes of the bylaw. An exception to this distance requirement shall be permitted for no more than one dwelling unit associated with the management and operation of agricultural uses on the farmland. So, but for other uses, yes, you can request a reduction, but you have to provide substantial vegetation, screening, land contours, et cetera.
Okay, Kathy? You know, Dorothy asked this mainly because in one of these, there is a farm. It's up in North, North Amherst, but I'll lower my hand. So the question is, is the farm protected or not?
We've already, Chris has already addressed.
Evan?
Just real quick, just to respond to Kathy. So Kathy is arguing against changing to SPR because she's nervous about footnote A, and which allows you to modify. So I just want to inform her how the footnote to work because the footnote A works that you can get those dimensional regulations modified under a special permit. So you can't get those modifications of footnote A through SPR. So you're arguing that we should keep it special permit because of footnote A. But if a developer wants to take advantage of footnote A, they can only do so through a special permit. And so that's how those footnotes work. So if they wanted to make it taller, if they wanted to use more building coverage, they would have to get a special permit for those footnote A modifications. If they didn't, everything else is by site plan review. So that special permit protection for those dimensional regulations, that remains in place. It's just where they don't need those modifications, they don't need to go for a special permit. So the footnote conversation is sort of moot here.
There's no other comments at this time, we're going to, Shalani?
I just want to, I just hope that all the counselors can voice their concerns and and as we're going back and forth, this is really helpful, I hope, to the public as well, that, you know, that there's a lot of thought and reasoning going behind why we're choosing to do this. And, you know, so just saying that, no, we just want, why are we loosening the SPR? And I hope that that has been addressed today, that we're loosening the SPR in the village center, RVC, because we want more density within the defined, in a very defined way, and so that we have a little more housing because we have a housing crisis and because we have just passed the comprehensive housing policy. And it is being done in a thoughtful way, so it's not done in downtown where we want more mixed use, but it's being done over there in RVC. So I hope that any questions that people have, we can address them and but please do ask your questions. And if you're still not convinced, then we need to know why you're not yet convinced. And it's okay not to be convinced, but just tell us why, what is your reasoning for not wanting?
Thank you. If there's no other comments at this time, we're going to move on. We, the next item on the agenda is the American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is an initial plan. We have a report in our folder, and I believe that Paul Bachmann and Finance Director Sean Magano are going to address this.
I'm just go, go straight to Sean on this, if you're still with us, Sean.
I am, so is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes.
This is maybe a lighter topic, maybe not, I don't know.
We could use it.
All right, does everyone see the presentation on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so quickly, I want to thank all the staff committees, stakeholders who contributed feedback so far and have helped shape the plan. So this is, this plan is focused on the state and local recovery portion of the American Rescue Plan Act, which comes to the town in the form of a federal grant for about twelve million dollars. You can see the major eligible uses here on the screen. Within each of these categories or within these categories are many subcategories, most of which have to, for an expenditure to be eligible, has to be related to an impact of COVID-19. There are some ineligible uses. The four here are the ones that are specifically identified as not being eligible. These grant funds cover multiple years, they must be obligated by December thirty-first of 2024, which is FY25, and they must be spent by December thirty-first of 2026, which is FY27. The ARPA grant is a successor to CARES, which ends in the next couple of months. And one of the things that we've been discussing quite a bit throughout this planning process is how these funds will interrelate with ARPA funds that went directly to the state, which there's no official plan yet. And also ARPA funds have gone to the schools. And then also, we know there will probably be other buckets of ARPA funds that will go specifically to departments for certain activities. So we engaged in a process that was recommended by the finance committee, where we started by assessing the impacts of COVID, identifying the unmet needs related to those impacts, reviewing non-ARPA funding sources, determining the town's ability to implement a solution or manage a solution. We then prioritized those needs and then developed the drafts spending plan that you'll see here tonight. And then that will lead us into the next phase, which is public engagement. So this is the list or the primary list of stakeholders who were consulted through our department heads. We know for sure that there are some stakeholders that were missed, and we know that we haven't heard from the public at large. So you'll hear more about our public engagement process that we'll be doing this month. But anybody who was missed still has ample opportunity to weigh in on the plan before it's finalized. So these five elements are critical to the plan. And I think really regardless of what the plan changes over the next month, will be critical to any plan that we finalize. So any expenditures of the grant, we think, have to be aligned with town council priorities. And any programs that are funded through the grant have to be developed through a lens of equity and sustainability. Equity in particular is a theme that is throughout the treasury guidance around how we can use these funds. And so it has to be really central to how we develop programs that will be funded by the grant. Transition planning for any allocations that are intended to be ongoing costs. So if there are any costs, and you'll see a few of them, I'll point them out as we get into the details, that will live beyond the ARPA grant. We want to, we're going to have a plan upfront, how those costs will be folded into the operating budget. We have to focus our grant funds in areas hit the hardest by the pandemic, and I'll talk more about that on a slide. This grant gives us an opportunity to address some longstanding challenges in town, whether it be for homelessness or housing, early childhood care, all issues that have been made worse by the pandemic. And lastly, we want to collect data on any proposed grant allocations. We want to monitor these programs, and we want to establish measures of success from the very beginning that we can track throughout the term of the grant. So that when we're done with the grant, at the end, we'll have a number of strategies that were funded, and we'll be able to have data that will tell us which ones were most successful in case we want to continue funding things into the future. So the American Rescue Plan Act calls for focusing funds in the hardest-hit areas. And the way they, one of the ways they recommend is through the use of qualified census tracts, which is a, it's a more complicated calculation than this, but it's essentially an area with a high percentage of income-eligible residents. And so what they say is if you target expenditures primarily in that area, then it sort of pre-qualifies that expenditure as serving a hard-hit community. It doesn't mean we can't spend ARPA grant funds outside of the qualified census tracts. But if we do, we have to have an alternative justification as to how those funds serve hard-hit communities. And it's not for all categories of expenditures, but it's for many of them. And so one thing you'll notice, these are the qualified census tracts here in Amherst. We've lost one from 2021 to 2022. It's something that I've talked to a little bit with planning already, and we don't have a good answer yet as to why we lost one. But the one that would cover downtown did go away. So all that means is if we do allocate funds that primarily affect downtown, we would have to have an alternative justification, which we can certainly do that. In terms of public engagement, we have the presentation here tonight. We're going to get on the calendar tomorrow for listening sessions, where we'll do a really brief overview of the proposed spending plan and then just gather input and what people like, what people don't like via Zoom. And we've also set up and engaged Amherst site that will house a lot of this presentation tonight. It'll have the timeline and the proposed listening sessions that will be put out on the website in the next day or two. And then we will come back in November, once we have all that input and with a plan that we feel reflects that input and present a final version to the council. So this pie chart groups proposed expenditures by larger categories. You'll notice there's lots of categories, which reflects the input that we receive from stakeholders and how wide the impacts of the pandemic were. The, this first spending plan, or this, what we're calling round one, allocates eighty percent of grant funds. We are holding back twenty percent for a round two, which would be a year from now. The reason to do that is, one, in case there are any more revenue deficits that would arise in the next year or so that we would want to fund. Two, if there are anything, anything that pops up throughout the year, either through feedback or impacts that maybe weren't identified early on, that we would have funds to then allocate towards those initiatives. And then three would be if any of these strategies prove to be really successful and we want to allocate more funds to them, we would have funds to do so. So again, this plan is proposing, or this plan allocates eighty percent of the grant. There's still twenty percent that is not designated at this point. And yes, I'll keep going. So as we get into the more detailed slides, you'll notice that on the left are the impacts and issues. These were what the stakeholders conveyed to us. On the right are the grant allocations. I'm going to focus primarily on the grant allocations for the sake of time. Another thing you'll notice are there are some fiscal years put in there. Those are not rigid fiscal years, it's just we do have to sort of map out cash flow based on the, how, when we get grant funds, we get half now and then half a year from now. And you'll notice that some of the proposed grant allocations are super-specific and some are more broad, and that was intentional, too. There are just some things we know we want to allocate funds for, but those initiatives are going to take much more planning time and collaboration with stakeholders. Um, but those initiatives are going to take much more planning time and collaboration with stakeholders to develop the specific programs that would be funded. Um, I'll, I'll call those out as we get to them. But again, you'll see some very specific initiatives and then some are that just seem very broad and, and it's intentional. So this first, um, section is public health and racial equity. Um, we combined racial equity with this section because it was identified as a public health issue. There are some specific racial equity initiatives in this section. Um, but I do want to just reiterate that racial equity and sustainability are things that we're going to have to apply to all programs, to all those different categories of proposed expenditures. Um, so it is specifically noted here, but it will really, uh, cut across all of the different categories as we go through them. So the first proposed strategy here is to create and expand mental health programming via request for proposals process. Uh, you're going to see a request for proposals process a few times throughout the next few slides. And what I'm about to say applies for all of those. Um, what we envision for this is working with planning department, other key stakeholders, um, to solicit solutions from private entities, nonprofit entities, um, and possibly state entities, um, to provide a solution to a problem. And in this case, it's a lack of mental health programming. And what we would expect, or what we're going to ask for is in that, in that solicitation, we would want a proposal for how the program will be self sustaining at the end of the grant term. So we want to use these funds to incentivize and spur growth and development in the areas where um, we may be lacking, but we don't want it to be a short term solution that after five years, whatever is being funded folds. Um, so in any of these requests for proposal processes that you see, um, there'll be an expectation that the programs that are funded by it would be self sustaining at the end of the grant term. The next strategy is to fund a diversity, equity and inclusion coordinator, which is already, um, started. Uh, the third strategy here is to hire an additional public health nurse to, uh, specifically support underserved populations. Um, and to continue to fund a administrative support position, which was funded through CARES, which is going to end shortly. And that position has really helped with a lot of the COVID. Um, the administrative tasks related to COVID, whether it be the vaccine clinic or contact tracing, communicating information and things like that. Um, the next one is to continue the ambassador program. Um, ambassadors help, uh, and enforce the board of health guidelines throughout downtown. This is a program will monitor, you know, if there are no board of health guidelines to, to enforce, then we might change course on this at a certain point. So it really depends on how the pandemic, um, unfolds. Uh, we heard about translation services earlier. That was definitely an input or definitely an impact that people identified, um, specifically around accessing healthcare and health services, having, um, translation services available. The next one is to maintain the four additional EMS staff who are hired through CARES and to keep them on board when CARES ends through FY23. And then the last one is, uh, was also part of the FY22 budget proposal, which is to fund startup costs for the community responder program. And these would be one time costs. And I think the implementation group is working on that and love more, a better idea of what those costs are in the next few months. The next slice here is homelessness. Um, 11% of the, the spending plan are $1 million. This is an example of a broader proposed use of the funds, um, to work collaboratively with key stakeholders to explore transitional housing opportunities and to identify and implement shelter solutions. After that, um, we have housing. And I just want to note that while we separated housing and homelessness, they both, um, you know, are related to housing. So we, we did break them up because they sort of have different elements of housing, but they are, uh, related. So in this particular one, um, a, another broad initiative would be to explore opportunities to expand affordable housing stock and to work collaboratively with the Affordable Housing Trust to develop housing assistance programs. Uh, we did get good feedback from the housing trust and so we, we would need to work with them more to, to, to develop the programs that would be the most effective. School department submitted a number of requests, um, or submitted a number of impacts and, and related needs. And, uh, in this particular case, they're all around the space, um, at the elementary schools and some of the modifications they had to make related to COVID, um, to the quad classrooms. And so these two proposed, um, grant allocations are to fund the capital costs related to moving sixth grade to the middle school and to fund the operating cost for a period of time. Revenue loss is one that we've already expended some of these funds because they were related to FY21 budget deficits and the enterprise funds. Um, sewer and transportation, we know those are eligible. They've, the, the funds have already been shifted, um, to close those budget gaps. Water is one that we just don't have enough guidance yet from the treasury as to whether it's eligible or not. Um, if it proves to be eligible, then, um, we will be able to use the full 700,000 to close that gap and uh, restore the, the fund balance that had to be, had to be used to cover it for FY21. Um, if it's not eligible, then we would not use the full 700,000 and that, those funds would be freed up for a second round of allocations. Another thing we heard about, um, a little earlier in the meeting, youth recreation programming, 7% or approximately 700,000. Um, the two initiatives in this category, category would be to fund enhancements to Amherst Recreation that support underserved populations. And then another RFP process to explore the creation or expansion of a youth center. And again, that process, the, the goal would be that whatever comes out of that process would be a self sustaining model, um, at the end of the grant term. Economic revitalization, um, 5% of the, of the round one allocation. The first strategy is to fund small business startups to help fill some of the storefronts downtown, um, and an emergency relief program related to COVID. Uh, work with the cultural council to develop programs that create or promote opportunities for art and cultural organizations. That's one group that we received really, um, we received a lot of feedback from, um, throughout the process. They had a couple of sessions where they heard from artists and, and those who own the, uh, performing arts venues. And so, um, that is certainly an area that was hit pretty hard by the pandemic. Uh, fund other improvements to downtown and to fund the construction accessible downtown public restroom. Sustainability initiatives, this is another broad category. There have been a lot of ideas, um, that people have generated, but, um, what we're proposing is for staff, including the sustainability coordinator to work collaborative, collaboratively with the, um, ECAC to target investments with the greatest reduction fossil fuel usage and to fund the sustainability intern for one year. Um, again, there are a lot of different ideas from retrofitting apartments to, um, uh, municipal building retrofits to reduce carbon impact. And so we would want to target those funds to where they can make the most, um, difference. Childcare and early education, 5%. Uh, the first one is to do an RFP to create and expand childcare options in town. Uh, there was a consulting report done in the last year or so that talked about the, the real lack of, um, childcare, especially at the infant age, um, which I'm about to deal with in three or four months. And, um, these funds will be used to generate ideas for, um, how to increase slots, um, and increase, um, access to the, the slots that currently exist. Um, second one would be to fund the expansion of the preschool in the school department to add an additional classroom. They noted that because of the pandemic, there was some gaps in, um, intervention services and early education. And so this would help, um, provide preschool to a greater number of children. And the third strategy here is to fund wraparound services for students. Um, after remote learning, the school, uh, elementary school and the secondary school schedule shifted. And so now there's a greater portion of time, particularly at the elementary school after school ends, um, where childcare is needed. Resident emergency aid and support, uh, 4%. The first strategy here is to fund a, uh, transitional support coordinator. This would be a position that would be sort of a central hub or expert in town, um, of all the social services where, whether it be for homelessness or, um, substance abuse, unemployment, rental assistance, somebody who can help coordinate all the different programs and be that expert that somebody can go to, um, to, to get help. And also somebody who can identify the gaps that we have in town and, and help work with different stakeholders to maybe close some of those gaps. Um, this would be a temporary position, maybe something that we'd want to fund longer if it, if this proves to be successful. Um, but we think this is something that would be very valuable coming out of the pandemic. Um, the second strategy is to fund the resident emergency fund and or social support providers. So this would be if uh, individual, um, families have some sort of hardship related to COVID, um, to have a, a pot of money that could provide some temporary, temporary relief. Um, we did that with CARES and, and during the height of the pandemic, it was utilized quite a bit. Um, and so we would continue some of that. Third is to fund delivery services and provide additional resources for the survival center. They, they provided quite a bit of impact or quite a bit of, um, input as well. And fourth would be to fund transportation for the senior center. Um, Mary Beth, before she left noted that one of the biggest, the greatest barriers is just getting seniors to the senior center to access the programming. Um, we have a van to, to drive them. We just don't have a person to drive that van. Um, and so this would be, um, to fund that for a certain period of time. Almost done. Uh, town infrastructure improvements, another 4%. Uh, the first strategy here is to improve the wifi downtown and other key locations. We are applying for another grant that we'll know if we're going to get in the next couple of months. And if we get that grant, obviously this will come off the list. But that is a really high priority that, um, the town manager hears about often, and we want to, um, get that fixed going forward. Um, second would be to extend municipal fiber to key locations that were not covered with the first round of municipal fiber installations. Um, one location being to the top of Mount Lincoln and, um, other locations being some of our water and sewer, uh, facilities. And then third, um, is to fund cybersecurity improvements. We're doing a lot right now around training. Um, but there are some infrastructure improvements that the IT, IT, IT department has identified as well. And then other, these are just, um, kind of grouped all into this one page. Um, the first is just indirect costs. This is an estimate of the fringe benefits, um, related to the, the grant funded initiatives on the prior slides. Um, the next is FY22 budget needs. These were some of the, um, other ideas that we had presented in the FY22 budget. Um, a capital projects manager, funds for Cherry Hill that were, uh, were eliminated from the budget in the prior year. And some staff transition costs. Those are things that if the FY22 budget is doing well, um, we may not need to pull from the ARPA grant. And if, if that's the case, then that would free up funds, uh, for a second round of allocations. And then lastly, grant administration. We want somebody to manage this grant, um, from day one to do all of the, um, reporting, compliance, uh, managing the different, uh, recipients of grant funds, doing the, um, so we have to do a, for, because we're a non entitlement unit, we're considered a smaller entity in the eyes of the federal government. Um, we only have to report once a year to them. However, we want to do, uh, quarterly reporting to track those measures of success that we identify for these programs. Um, and be able to monitor things, uh, more often. So this, this position would do all of that. So in closing, we think these allocations are responsive to the, um, impacts and needs that were identified by departments and key stakeholders. The, any program we fund with this grant needs to be developed with a focus on equity and sustainability. We want to, or we will establish clear measures of, of success for any programmatic allocations from the beginning. Uh, we believe these allocations can address many of the longstanding challenges that the town has faced, um, that have been made worse by COVID-19. This fund, this, this proposal allocates, um, 80% of the ARPA funds across six fiscal years and leaves 20% for a second round to capture anything that may have been missed. And the next step is to get feedback from the council and the community. Um, so we can refine this plan and move it towards, towards a final version. And with that, I will stop sharing.
Thank you. Comments from the council, uh, George?
Um, one question and maybe a comment, um, just that all of these various allocations and grants that are up on the screen that we've been looking at, all I take it have to be vetted, um, and approved by the feds. Is that correct?
Yeah. So the, um, the feds have released their initial guidance with all the different eligibility criteria. Um, and so we've done the preliminary work to go through these and sort of categorize them as to what, uh, what category they would fall under. But when we actually develop programs, there will be a lot of components of the grant that we would have to build into the programs to make sure they're eligible.
Yeah, because that is my comment. I, I saw many of these that I could see a clear connection to COVID and I saw some where I saw absolutely none. So I assume that in the end, the feds have the final word.
Yeah. And so that's a good point. One of the eligibility criteria of the grant is, um, something called revenue loss. And so what that means is we had to do a calculation as part of this grant to show where revenues would have been had it not been for the pandemic. And um, what the grant allows you to do is within that amount, you can spend it on any government service. Um, so there are some expenditures that have to fit a certain criteria. And then there are others that we can qualify to say that if we had, you know, the pandemic hadn't hit our, our revenues would be X and we could have funded these services. Um, so most communities are going to be doing a mix of those two different types of expenditures.
Thank you, Sean. And Lynn, if I may, just to comment, then, um, thank you for answering those questions, Sean. Um, I, I just, as a personal observation, given what we've witnessed in this town in terms of the economic, severe economic impacts, particularly to our business community, I just find 5% devoted to economic recovery to be woefully inadequate. Just a comment.
Mandy Jo.
Yes, thank you. A couple of questions and a couple of comments. Um, I am confused as to why school department requests are part of this ARPA funds when the school department gets its own completely dedicated ARPA funds. And so I would like to know why we are spending town ARPA funds on school department when the school department gets its own ARPA funds. Um, the four additional EMS staff, why is that only through FY23? Um, it's a need that's ever present. It doesn't go away in June of 23. Um, we need more firefighters and EMS staff than that. And, um, why wouldn't we be seeking to maintain them permanently? Similarly, with the rest of all the additional staff members, transitional support coordinator, sustainability intern, DEI coordinator, additional public health nurse or expanded programs, the transportation for the senior center, translation services. I want to see a transition plan for how those will not just be dropped off the radar and dropped off the funds when the grant funds disappear. What is our transition plan to continue these services and these employees, especially like the EMS staff? After whatever FY year you've got set in this program. Um, because we can't, I, I'm just gonna say, we can't offer transition ser- translation services for two years and then stop. So we have to have a plan for how that will continue. And I would like to see what that plan is for incorporating them into the operating budget. Um, and finally, um, I was disappointed to see not a lot of, um, additional or funds, you know, in, in, not a lot, but you know, one of the sets of workers are essential workers, our first responders were some of the most affected by COVID because they never got to take off. They never got to do anything yet. When you look at like the fire department, all they're getting from this is four additional EMS staff for one year. But they need a new fire truck. They need some capital spending. They, one of the things that this program had was premium pay for essential workers, yet that's not part of this plan. Um, and why aren't we focusing on our own town workers that were deemed essential, the public health people, the fire, the EMS, the police, the DPW that never, that had to go to work when we had no idea what COVID was like. Um, where, where is that? And some of the capital spendings that could relate to that. Thank you.
Evan?
Yeah. So I think two comments and two questions. I had three comments, but Mandy just said one, which was, it feels like the fire department is not, uh, giving, given their importance in responding to the COVID pandemic. Um, does not seem to be sharing in these, these resources. Um, and I was also curious about premium pay. Um, I'm excited to see, uh, the, a, under the, um, economic revitalization part, the construction of an accessible downtown public restroom. I'm, I'm hoping that's something that we can prioritize. I'm happy to see it there. Um, that's something for our economic growth that also serves, uh, our unhoused population. So that's great. Uh, but I also share George's concern that 5% of this devoted to its economic revitalization seems pretty small. Um, given the pretty significant economic impact of COVID. And I'm looking at this, it's 575,000 for economic revitalization. A, a nicely done, permanent accessible bathroom is probably going to eat up the majority of that budget. Uh, add on to that, uh, this, this small business startup emergency relief, where you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars, I imagine, per business. Uh, that money seems to disappear pretty quickly. Um, so, uh, that's a comment. So that's a comment. Two questions. If I can remember them. One is under economic revitalization, fund improvements to downtown. Sounds great. No idea what it means. Sort of curious what you're thinking of. And specifically. If there was thought about. Plugging any of the gaps in funding for the North Common renovation in that. And then the second part of it is, I know back when we were having a discussion about the F Y twenty-two budget. One thing that happened in that budget that I was not thrilled about was that we essentially eliminated the Economic Development Director. And at the time, there had been some conversation about perhaps using grant money to fill that position temporarily or to do that. And I was half expecting to see some ARPA funds devoted towards that. It seems like we're not afraid of using ARPA funds to hire staff. We have the sustainability intern, the D E I coordinator, the EMS. Folks, although I share Mandy's concern about. About that. But I guess I'm sort of wondering what happened to that conversation about putting a staff person on economic development? Since when it was eliminated back in June, we were told, well, maybe we'll we'll figure something out with grant funding. And here we have grant funding. So those are my two questions.
Okay. Alyssa.
All the things everyone else has said, so plus ones on all of those. Plus, I do just want to mention the slightly. Off thing about the presentation, which is that I understand that you didn't want to fill up all the slides with all the stakeholders. But the Board of Health isn't listed. I understand that, yes, you talked to the department head, but that's completely separate from the Board of Health, which has been doing a lot of community outreach. Associated with public health, and I would hope that they would be talked to directly, not just through the department that works with them. And along those lines, I'm being picky with people who are waiting up really late to do this. But it says town staff have worked collaboratively with elected and appointed officials. Well, you haven't worked with the town council at all yet, unless you're counting the finance committee members who are town councillors. So I just don't want the public to think we had. Any idea what was really in this, other than a list of like five items we saw once before, to the best of my knowledge. This is our first crack at, and I appreciate that you recognize that. In another part of the presentation. But this is being handled very differently in different towns as to, you know, at what point the elected officials get involved. And sharing the concerns of what Manny Joe, George, Evan said. One of the things is we need to be able to explain to the community what we're doing associated with school funds versus municipal funds. I'm always for a bigger share of the pie to the schools, but we need to understand to explain to people why it is. That we need to fund several school things through this side rather than through the school side of their funding and. Fire EMS, all those things. And Economic Development Director, that that can't fade away just because it didn't end up on one of these slides. That needs to be brought back as a proposal so that we can have that conversation.
Shalani.
Let's see. Okay, just feedback on youth recreation, what I've been hearing from. Some of the residents that I've been meeting in the apartment complexes is that. They lost transportation to the leisure services, so just the way that seniors are being provided transportation. That kids also, we provide transportation. And I had similar thing about economic development officer. And also the downtown spaces. If we had the discussion, I think in C R C where we said. Could we beautify the because it's going to be more outdoor dining? And so could we. Have more permanent and more attractive and uniform looking. Outdoor spaces, maybe covered temporarily and stuff. So there are a bunch of different ideas for that. And one last thing was. I think with the, yeah, the schools has been talked about in the transportation. And food for in under public health. That was the other concern that we heard that people. Who didn't have transportation during COVID had to go and get tested, and they were struggling how to get there and so forth. Again, I think transportation is a common theme there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, I'll be really brief. Because I think a lot of my comments have already been adopted by other people, so I'm not going to repeat anything. The one thing that to respond. On for Alyssa is that the Finance Committee was not involved in this beyond the initial process, which then. Came to the council, but this plan has not come back to the Finance Committee yet. Secondly, I'm just getting back to the. Whole question. George touched on a little bit, but. The stakeholders, one that I thought was missing was the Chamber of Commerce. And the reason I picked on the chamber is that if we're going to get into economic revitalization with whatever amount. Businesses that are not located within the Business Improvement District. May have been affected too. And the chamber. Is an outreach tool to get to businesses that are not necessarily in the Business Improvement District.
Yeah, Lynn, can I respond to that one real quick? We did receive feedback from the chamber. It just came after this presentation was finalized, but their feedback was around. Startup funds for new businesses. And so that's reflected in the plan.
Thank you. Dorothy.
Quick question. How does a youth center become self sustaining? I mean, I don't think you mean to charge them. For use of the center because that wouldn't meet our goals.
So there are models and other. Well, I mean, we'd have to see what solutions are provided, but there are models in many other towns of youth centers that are not funded by the municipality. Or at least not completely a hundred percent funded by the municipality. And just going back to the collaboration process, sorry if it was if it was confusing. I meant to say that we've worked with. Elected and appointed officials on the process, which we have had several, at least two meetings with the council on the process. And the Finance Committee, but I did not list you as a stakeholder because we haven't shared the initiatives yet until tonight.
Darcy. Please unmute.
I I just wanted to say how great it is to have twelve million dollars. And and but it's kind of crazy when it's divided up into all those different categories, how fast it disappears. You know, and how how, you know, you can see like in in the sustainability category. Probably just transitioning one building. HVAC system. Would take up. You know, a majority of the funds. But anyway, we're all glad that we have the money and. And I know ECAC is interested in helping to give input about, you know, priorities. For spending it. So. That's all.
Any other comments at this time? Paul.
Yes, I just want to thank the council. These are really valuable comments for us. And, you know, we will take those into consideration as we move, as we develop this. Further, the it's really helpful to hear the counselor councils. The counselors priorities. This isn't your your only shot at it. Obviously, there'll be opportunities down the road. And I also want to know, well, twelve million dollars is a lot of money. It's about half of what the city of North Hampton is getting. So. You will be comparing as you look at what other cities and towns are doing. We are not getting because of the the formula developed by the feds. We aren't getting it nearly as much money as as some other cities are getting.
Kathy.
Just just a quick comment. On. As you look at the pie slices, if there are some that have synergy with each other and are two firsts. So an example might be within housing. If we have affordable housing. And we could rehab it to be more energy efficient or buy solar so that it lowered their operating costs. We'd be doing something that's climate change, and we'd be doing something for low income. And so one of the beginning slides was equity. So trying to think of those dollars would then fit two pie slices. And, you know, so try to look for those kinds of opportunities. I do the same thing in downtown, you know, something that increases. Longer term sustainability. So. And and I'm looking at those opportunities that aren't like funding a new staff person and then finding where the money is. If we fund some things that they're one time funding with long time payoff, then you can do a mix. So, you know, I I'm not quite sure how the SMART program works for affordable housing, but. The extra subsidies you get for the purchases, whether we can get those, you know, so where we're doing matching funds. So just to be able to think for those opportunities, because it's an investment now that fits more than one category for a vulnerable population. That's my thought as I looked at. How quickly twelve million disappears when we slice it up. To look, look for, I call them two firsts. There might be three firsts. The same thing, you know, that three different groups are benefiting. And there are goals. That's it.
Lynn, can I respond to that real quick?
Please.
No, I think that's exactly right, Kathy. That is one of the things we did try to do. You know, I hear the comments on economic revitalization. I think, you know, most of these programs will have an economic benefit. You know, the housing programs, the sustainability programs. Anything that we're doing to create, you know, new preschool slots and youth program and all that type of. Pretty much all the initiatives will have positive economic impacts in town. But I do hear the the input from the council, so.
Mandy Jo.
Yeah, Paul mentioned something about how North Hampton is getting almost double what we're getting, yet they have ten thousand, one quarter less residents than we do. And so I'd like to know what kind of advocacy do we as a town need to. Do to, you know, our reps, our senators, both at the federal and the state level to, in some sense. It might be too late this time, but there's state ARPA money that's going to have some formula distributed and all like. Why are we getting so much less than North Hampton, yet we're a third bigger than them? And how do we rectify that? Through advocacy with our state and federal people.
So we would need to become a metropolitan city. That is how they divvied up the funds. There, I think, I don't know, there's thirty or forty metropolitan cities in the state. They split a different pot of money than everybody else split. So there are a lot of huge inequities in terms of how the. How the grant funds were divvied up, especially as you go out east. Towards Boston, there's some big disparities in how the funds were allocated.
Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, then I'm going to. I've already moved item D, the long term public ways request to October eighteenth. Paul sent Guilford home about an hour ago. I actually very briefly. Want to disband with the district and advisory board charge. I have spent a lot of time talking to Irene. I think she was on earlier. She has now polled the group. And has been assured that there will be a quorum at the at the next. Meeting, two meetings that they have prior to coming to the council. Therefore, trying to change somebody's status or bringing anybody else on new at this time. Is does not seem necessary, nor frankly. Is it very efficient for the committee to bring somebody else on? So unless there's any further discussion, I'm actually removing that item and the. Re and the discussion. And the motion. Okay, then the and the only motion on F. That we need to do is one that was not on your sheet, but we have worked up. Athena, can you show us the motion for Kendrick Place? Okay. What happened? Okay, so the one that we're going to need to do tonight because we're getting ready for a hearing on it. Is the last one, and I'm going to make a motion to refer residential parking regulations, changes to Kendrick Park. Kendrick Place to the Town Services and Outreach Committee. To hold a hearing and make recommendations or provide an update to the Town Council within ninety days. Is there a second?
Second, Ross.
Is there any further question or discussion? And the reason we're not, we're not doing the other two is because there's no immediate hearing coming up on them. Hearing no further discussion. I'm going to move to the vote on this. I'm going to start with Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Greysmerzy, yes. Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz's absent, Shalani Baumellem.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
Patty Angeles.
Hi.
It's unanimous. Okay, the appointments for the town manager have been already done on the consent agenda. We're up and there are no town council appointments. We're up to committee and liaison reports, Mandy Jo.
I think you've heard enough from CRC tonight, so nothing.
Okay, Kathy.
It's the same report as last time, but for those of you who want to hear further discussion, the elementary school. Building Committee is meeting this Thursday at eight, and we're continuing the design proposal, discussion comparisons and. Getting an initial discussion about a website for the project.
And that's eight o'clock AM.
Eight o'clock AM by Zoom.
Yep. Andy, Finance.
Yes, at the last Finance Committee meeting, I guess there are two things that I just quickly reported on. One is we. Spent most of the meeting reviewing revisions to the. Management policies and objectives, which is. As I think I said last time, an internally focused. Document on financial policies, though it does cover things that have budget consequence. Like the percentage of of money that we're. Allowing to target for reserves and. To to actually increase the upper end of that. So there are several things. You can find the draft in the Finance Committee packet. We are going to be reviewing revisions at our next meeting in October. The other thing that we did. And I either Sean or I will report on this so that it's because this is more important for the council. Is we discuss the timeline for all of the Finance Committee process to work through. The development of budget guidelines following the Financial Indicators meeting. And it will be similar to last year, what we've proposed, which is to come to the council. At the beginning of December with a draft. And then have a second meeting shortly thereafter to. Incorporate any comments that come from the council and not anticipate that the vote will necessarily happen. Until the meeting, the next council meeting thereafter. So that's a brief report.
Okay, George, G O L.
Yeah, G O L has begun the process of filling the income vacancy. We declared the pool of applicants to be sufficient on September twenty-nine. And you've all been, I've sent you all the C A Fs to the current applicant pool. There are actually eight of them at the moment. We will be following the policy on recommendations that the council just adopted, but this process was actually begun before that. And so that's why I did what I did. Going forward, any new applicants, you'll get the C A Fs automatically because that's the way the system is set up. Will be meeting, voting on Wednesday, hopefully on selection guidance and establishing a timeline. With the approval of my colleagues. And I'm hoping that we'll have a recommendation to you for this position by November eighth, the November eight council meeting. And finally, we'll be doing, reviewing the surveillance technology bylaw. It has received a K P law review.
Thank you. Evan, T S O. The new chair of T S O.
Yes, and I'd like to congratulate my vice chair, uh, Alyssa Brewer, who has taken on that role. Um, so uh, we just voted a referral for a public hearing that TSO proactively noticed, um, just to make sure we met the posting deadline. So there will be a public hearing on uh, parking regulation changes on Kendrick Place on October twenty-first at six thirty PM. Um, at our next meeting, which will be October fourteenth, we're going to be returning to our discussion that's been tabled for over a year now about requests, uh, DPW request for parking regulation changes on Lincoln Ave. I know you all know that because you read the report, even though I got it to you pretty late. Uh, apologies for that. Um, uh, but saying this for the public, if you are interested in parking changes on Lincoln Ave or Kendrick Place, those will be the primary focus of TSO deliberations in the month of October.
Great, uh, liaison reports. We will, in the future, hear from the African Heritage Reparations Assembly. Uh, we have now added that into liaison reports. There were no minutes to approve at this time. Uh, Paul.
Lynn, Alyssa has her hand up.
I'm sorry, Alyssa.
You meant future like in thirty seconds from now, right?
Yeah, sure.
African Heritage Reparation Assembly has had two meetings so far. They voted in co-chairs, Dr. Jamila Jensen and Michelle Miller. And they're gonna have their third meeting. It was originally supposed to be tonight, um, but various conflicts arose, and it's actually gonna be on Friday at two o'clock. So given that we just appointed them, they're already about to have their third meeting. So they are running full steam ahead.
Right, Alyssa Pat and Pat are the liaisons there. Um, any further comments? Shalani.
They said, sorry, was a vacancy um, filled up or what happened with that?
This is for the, yes. Why don't we take that as an opportunity to move on to the town manager, answer that question and have him give us highlights?
Yes, so, so there's a vacancy. Uh, we do have a new, some new applicants that our interview team is going to be interviewing. So hopefully we'll have another one, but that hasn't delayed the work of the uh, reparation group to keep moving. And I don't really have a lot to add from my written reports. Been weeks since the last report, so if there's any, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions? See none, town council comments. I just want to recognize, because I did not get, I'm sorry. Manny Jo, did you have questions with the town manager?
No, you moved on, so I raised my hand.
All right, um, I just want to mention that um, several of us were able to attend the naturalization ceremony for twenty-one new citizens. Unfortunately, only, unfortunately, one of them was in fact an Amherst resident. And I want to thank Manny, Jo, Dorothy and George for joining me that day. Um, I will give you highlights at some point, but not tonight, about the agenda items for the eighteenth. And I also want to point out that I've sent you a modified uh, town manager's evaluation timeline, changing dates, making sure that nothing is on the twenty-fifth of October. Also, um, working with, um, I'll think of it in a moment. Um, I've really spent a lot of time working on the evaluation forms with the HR director and also um, have been, we, we will be giving you a word document this year and not asking that you do it in Survey Monkey. Are there any questions? Manny Jo.
Um, sort of related to that report and to a future agenda item. Um, I don't know whether it was the last meeting or two meetings ago, we talked about the ban shell on the common, and there were some future motions that you said you'd bring back to the council. Um, particularly regarding the need for TSO to provide a draft revision to the reservation of public ways policy. And I'm wondering when that motion will be on a council agenda, and hopefully it can be on consent, but I don't want that to get lost.
Thank you. Okay, Darcy.
Yeah, I just have a question about the materials that you put in the packet about the town manager evaluation and the, the form um, for the staff evaluation. I'm wondering if that is going to go through GOL or how, you know, like if we have input that we wanted to give about that, how we would do it?
Yeah, it was on the GOL agenda uh, two weeks ago when we were not able to have a quorum and because of the timing, we've had to move on. Therefore, I've talked to the HR director. We're basically using the same form as last year, and the only thing we've done is add a question on diversity and equity. Equity and inclusion, I think it is, equity and inclusion.
So if I, if I had a suggestion about that, I could just send it to you?
Please do.
Okay.
Okay. George.
Yeah, this kind of falls between comment and question for Paul. I was a little slow. I will never do well on Jeopardy, I can see, because I can't, I can't hit the clicker fast enough. Um, but I've had conversations with a number of people on Fearing Street and Allen and uh, related to trash and, and so forth. I've reached out to Paul already on this, and he got my photos hopefully today. Maybe they gave him some comic relief. Um, but some of the folks are, you know, just, this is an issue that's ongoing one. Um, and uh, the question, immediate question was whether trash receptacles or something could be placed along Fearing. I think I've heard from time past that that's not a good idea because they tend to get stolen and vandalized. Um, but uh, you know, I, I went out today. I was told Monday is not a bad day to do it, and I came back with a nice big full bag of trash, uh, mostly beer cans, bottles, the usual stuff. Um, maybe your neighborhoods don't have that problem. Um, it's an issue I know around town sometimes, but Fearing in particular um, is, is pretty much a mess. So it's, I don't know what role the town can play, if any. I've reached out to the Greek community and asked, and they're interested. I'm not sure what that will come of that. Um, but that's an issue particular to District Three and particularly to that neighborhood. And uh, just wanted to uh, uh, sort of make that comment and hope that at some point, um, I can have further conversation with either Paul or Guilford um, about how we can address that going forward.
Okay, Dorothy.
Um, just want to second what George is saying. He's been working on some initiatives like that for quite a while. But um, there's something that we brought up a couple of years ago, uh, which is that some students in UMass think that Fearing belongs to the university and the streets above it. And that there was a discussion that there might be some signs saying private neighborhood. Um, this is one that was really brought up by the uh, Sunset Pleasant Neighborhoods Association. Um, and the other thing is, why can't UMass do some policing? Because that's a family neighborhood. There are lovely homes. I mean, there's maybe like one that I don't like, but they're beautiful homes on Fearing. They're family homes. And, you know, the idea that you can be living in a house in your neighborhood and that people can come through and just trash it and then go home to their dorm or something, that's just not, not realistic. Um, I mean, I really support what George is doing, trying to work with the groups of students who are a little more socially responsible, but, but we have to go beyond that. People who are dropping the litter have to be addressed, and I think the person they might pay attention to is in UMass, not in the town of Amherst. But we need to say, this is part of the town of Amherst. Don't miss it.
Thank you. Um, Andy Jo.
Yeah, what George brought up reminded me of something. We haven't heard any reports on strategic partnership negotiations or agreements with UMass for eighteen, nineteen, twenty months. I don't know how long. Um, I fear that it has gotten forgotten. And this Fearing issue is something that should be part of that conversation, you know, because that's, um, if, if we send in or do trash receptacles or something, that's town costs directly related to university town gown issues. Um, so I would like to have a decent update in the next town manager report on what is going on with strategic partnership agreement, where it is, if it hasn't been going on, when it will start back up. Because it's, it's like three years outdated right now that we haven't actually had one.
Yeah, thanks, Brenda Jo, Kathy.
Um, I, I just want to build on this conversation. I had a quick conversation with Paul last weekend after we heard from residents at our last council meeting about unfortunate a break-in in the house and unruly behavior over the weekend. And the suggestions that came out of it included a role for UMass to play, a stronger role. So adding it to demands, for example, that UMass campus police have a presence on Friday and Saturday nights. They can just stand there, even if it's at the edge of campus to say, you know, we're here. Another is some universities have expanded their student code of ethics to explicitly talk about off-campus behavior, to make it um, part of the code and make it have potential penalties. And I can upload this later because someone provided me with a legal citation that gave examples of campuses that had done this. Um, the other thing we talked about a little bit last week is we have some codes in our own bylaws that get enforced by our police. If it was better known that we have both a noise and nuisance and that we do enforce it, Paul gave me some statistics that we are out enforcing it, but let people know and that they could be liable for um, penalties, fines. And I think there's an illegal dumping fine that we have. We just rarely see anyone doing this, but just trying to make it more widely known that this, both the behavior is not to be tolerated, but there could be consequences. People aren't aware that they could call, register a citation, and this could feed back into the UMass Code of Contact. So I, I think this, Mandy, you're right, it should be part of a larger discussion, but it's also helping us, um, because it's both a town cost, but it's a community um, and neighborhood issue. So I'd love to see some of this stronger and publicized, that we're having these conversations. And again, not everyone is, not, this isn't a problem everywhere, but it's clearly a problem on edges of some of the campuses, and the university could do more.
Dorothy.
Um, I want to thank Paul for on a public ways question. Uh, one of the worst sidewalk craters on um, Amity Street, uh, north of the Marsh condos, was filled, and I found out because people began emailing me, telling me all about it, that it was finally filled. So uh, I want to say congratulations and thank you for the good work. And uh, we hope to see more sidewalk repairs. Thank you.
Are there any other comments at this time? If not, we broke last week's record. I'm going to adjourn the meeting at twelve oh-three. Thank you.